That passes. At this time, Madam Clerk.
We will have the invocation by-
Invitation by our Chaplain. For those of you that's able to stand and don't mind, will you stand with us? Let us pray. There God, just a couple of days ago on Sunday, all of us were stopped in our tracks with the loss of Kobe Bryant. It reminds us that we're here today and gone today. And therefore, it also encourages us that all that we do, we leave a legacy. But we do something good for today that will last for tomorrow and for generations to come. So bless all of us, as the great city we are, with our great leaders and our great departments, to make this city a place where everybody want to be. Because it's a place that you created. We give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Let us all say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain. Madam Clerk.
We will have a proclamation recognizing South Fulton Police Department Beyond the Badge Appreciation Day. Councilmember Baker.
The coach is not here. The coach is not here. The coach is not here.
What are we doing?
He's going away.
Okay, right, 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 right. Okay. I'll ask that every council member who can come down, please, for this proclamation. It is for our city of South Fulton's finest. Good evening, everyone. As we assemble and get organized for this proclamation, I just realized somebody told me that today is six years to the anniversary of snowboggading, if y'all remember that.
I know where I was.
Yeah. And coincidentally, I know where I was too, Councilwoman Gomes. It's one of those things that I'll never forget. I was at Renaissance Middle School, serving as a police officer, going to divert buses from Langston Hughes, where we spent the whole night in the building, separating hundreds of kids to sleep overnight at a school. And coincidentally, on the six-year anniversary, I'm here before you guys honoring the city of South Fulton's finest. And I want to read the proclamation, but I feel like I need to stop just because one of these little guys up here, this is the only little guy up here, but I can't call him that, but this young man right here, before, I think he was about 10 years old when we met, and I have to single him out because I was his police officer at the school, and he wasn't, I'm sorry, what'd you say? I was his police officer at the school. And there was a very, he was an interesting little guy. I remember writing him up and calling his mom and letting her know that we're gonna have to work with this young man, because if he doesn't straighten up, he gonna be going down the wrong path, hanging with the wrong people. And it's just an honor to find his name amongst this community-driven proclamation. This is something that the community posted and amplified, especially throughout my district, given that it was during the holiday season, and we know our police officers run to everything that everybody runs from. We also know that these men and women in our police department go above and beyond, but this particular incident, they went way beyond the badge. So the city of South Fulton recognizes them, whereas on the 15th of October 2019, Corporal Frederick Brown, Cornell Madison, and Gwendolyn Mosley of the City of South Fulton Police Department received a shoplifting call from Old National Highways Walmart. When on scene, five females were detained. Whereas upon further inquiry, it was discovered that the eldest woman was in fact homeless, was accompanied by her four children, comprised of two 12-year-old twins, 17- and 20-year-old disabled daughters. Her children did not attend school due to lack of funds for immunizations, due to the size of her family and their inability to find a suitable homeless shelter. Whereas the city of South Fulton's best and brightest, whose mission statement includes performing their duties with the highest degree of professionalism, dignity, respect, and excellence, on this day went above and beyond the call of duty, and through community linkages, secured through Walmart a $40 gift card for the woman, a $20 gift card from Kroger's assistant manager, got Big Daddy's owner, Mr. Marcus Sager, to pay for a room for seven days at the Travelodge Motel, got a dentist to volunteer to provide free-of-charge preventive care for the entire family, secured a doctor to provide the family with physicals and immunizations so that their children could attend school, put together $100 of their own funds for the woman, and Walmart did not pursue charges for the shoplifting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 28, 2020, as South Fulton Police Department Beyond the Badge Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. Thank you, Chief Medal, for your leadership and what you instill in our officers and our police department. Thank you, officers, for going beyond the badge. Thanks.
You know, you all heard Councilman Baker talk about Fred Brown, but Fred Brown is an example of what can happen when we invest in our youth as we move forward as a city. Fred was actually adopted by then the Fulton County Police Department. He was mentored to by a number of police officers within this organization that are still here to this day. And so when we take time to mentor to young people like that, this is what we produce. I mean, this is what we produce. And I say it all the time, every arrest situation doesn't require that an arrest be made. Sometimes when we find our people that are less fortunate in our communities, it's important for us to help them build the capacity to have a decent life. And that's what I'm so proud of these men and women for having done. Instead of executing that arrest, which they could have done, they took an opportunity to be an example, not only for that mother, but for those young daughters also. And that means everything to me as a leader. Their leader, Major Griffin, is here. I'd like to bring, oh, he's right here behind me. I'd like to bring Major Griffin up, because it's one thing for me to say it, but it has to go from my mouth to their feet, right? And so I want to thank Major Griffin for all of his leadership. I'm gonna bring him up here and let him say a few words about his officers also.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I want to tell you that I'm here as a proud parent, just like a father. The three individuals that we're recognizing tonight, they're all assigned to field operations, which is patrol, and they come in and they work hard every day. And when I mean every day, I mean every day. I'm almost speechless right now because I'm so happy that they're being recognized. I think it's time for us to bridge the gap between the community and the police department. We need to understand that we're all working for the same goal, the common goal, because I not only work for the City of South Fulton Police Department, but I'm also a resident. I just want to say thank you very much for coming out tonight, representing the city of South Fulton, and in appreciation of the South Fulton Police Department. Thanks again. We love you, we're here for you. Come see us. My door is open. Thank you.
In schools, their police officers are not referred to as police officers, they are referred to as resource officers. And they're referred to as resource officers is because they are full of resources. And so I am happy that the resources were used to mentor this young man to be a part of our police department. Thank you. Welcome to the city of South Fulton, and thank all of you all for doing what you did in our community. This is what community policing is all about.
Well, I'll be brief, all the heavyweights. First of all, thank you, Mr. Baker, for coming up and acknowledging this thing. When I first read this, I was overwhelmed, but I was so full of joy. And just like Chief said, every time they're on the beat, doing something, it's not always has to end in an arrest. And I hope that some of us have, you know, we have presented for me as a gun, they talk about one of our strengths, weaknesses with the police, Ma. But I don't think so. Look at what happened. This is one of our biggest, biggest, not a weakness, but you are a guiding light. You are positive to our community, and we want people to know that. So, Councilman Baker, thank you so much for this proclamation and giving these well-deserved young people, and you all right with me. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thanks, Senator.
Can we get dinner behind that? Day. Councilmember Willis.
Can I welcome all dreams? He can come on up. Come on, Marcus. So I was asked the question, the question was, you all wanted to have dinner with Councilwoman Willis? Is that what you all, the question? The answer is yes. I'll make sure you all have dinner with me and the mayor, Mayor Edwards. Can we have dinner with the, uh, thank you. We'll make sure we get that coordinated. I want to tell Tony Phillips happy birthday. Today is his birthday. But we are here today to honor Welcome All Panthers, 11 U, known as the Dream Team. I am very proud of you all. You all have done miraculous things in sportsmanship and on the field, but I want you all to know that to me, it's not important that you all win every game. To me, it's not important that you win any games. To me, it's important that you win in life. And so you all are being mentored to not only win on a football field, but you're being mentored to take the skills that you're learning to win in life. Because the truth is, most of you all won't make it to the big league, but hopefully you all will have the skills to go on to college. If you decide not to go on to college, you will have the skills to get a good job and take care of your families, to make an affordable life and living and quality of life for yourself, okay? So, I don't care if you lose every game, but it feels good that you all are winners. So whereas the Welcome All Park Youth Athletic Association was founded in 1995 and specializes in youth sports, Welcome All Park Youth Athletic Association oversees four programs: football, cheerleading, baseball, track. And whereas the Welcome All Park 11-U Dream Team Panthers began playing football for the Welcome All Park Youth Athletic Association in 2014, winning the league championship, state B-2C championship, and Eric Berry Turkey Bowl championship. And whereas in 2015, the Welcome All Park Dream Team continued to succeed by winning the league, state, and battle of the champions. In 2016, the Dream Team won the national championship for the first time. Since that time, the Dream Team has gone on to win multiple league, state, and national championships. And whereas the Welcome All Park Dream Team has remained undefeated for six years. You hear that old national saying, "Town?" And all while traveling to play nationally-ranked teams throughout the country. The Dream Team is undefeated on the field, but also in the classroom. As many of the team members are honor roll athletes, Dream Team has truly demonstrated excellence on and off the field. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor and City Council of the City of South Fulton congratulate and commend the Dream Team for all of their accomplishments and contributions to the city of South Fulton, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 28, 2020, Welcome All Park 11-U Dream Team Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia. Where's the head coach? Come on, Coach.
First off, we want to say thank you for the City Council, the Mayor, and all the constituents here in South Fulton. But we want to really give it up to these young men, because first off, it's not, it's just not excellence that we're preaching on the football field, but they're succeeding in the classroom. So the coaches, myself, as well as the parents, we try to live by example and teach them life lessons. So as Ms. Willis says, they'll be successful in life. So at the end of the day, this is our future right here you're looking at. Let's give it up for him.
I just want to reiterate how proud we are of these young men. I was at a national conference in September with about 8,000 people who do parks, and I was telling them about the new city of South Fulton, and suddenly somebody said, "Welcome All Panthers?" And I said, "Yes," and they immediately knew where I was from. So you had an impact all over the country. I want to thank Coach Sean Moffett and all these gentlemen who stay up here. They don't get paid to do this. They dedicate their time and effort for years at a time, not just on the field, but as he told you, in the classroom. That takes a special kind of person. I just want to thank you how much I appreciate that. And I want to thank our Mayor and Council for all the support they give us in parks and recreation. It makes a difference in the lives of young folks like this. Thank you.
And we are not trying to get rid of the football program. As a matter of fact, I've been getting calls from people who live in this community and who's from this community who want to help make this program better. So, thank you.
I don't know where we gonna fit. One to the back, we can tiptoe all three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Back here. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Municipal court reports why they're in the proclamation? That's a mistake. The municipal court reports is under proclamation? That's a mistake. Oh, I got you. But, but, but.
But they mixed it up.
They mixed it up.
Like courts have never been this quiet. Like I'm nervous.
I see. You're super powerful. You got to do it. Like this is, it's so different. It's scary.
This, uh-
I'm like, where are they hiding the body?
Yo, this is the last presentation, and then I want to go into Georgia State. What? Well, you gotta get moving. We gotta get to it. After the presentation, after the, uh, hearing.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Uh-uh, no. Uh-uh.
Now, Georgia State, we have to wait until after the presentation, after the public hearing.
We have to, we have to approve the agenda. We have to change it again.
I didn't, I didn't, I forgot about-
We can change it if we want to.
Let's, uh, can we, can we get Georgia State up here?
Yeah.
All right. I got this here, y'all.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation of preserving the past, gathering the current community, and teaching the next generation of District Four.
Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Katrina Singletary. I am so happy to be here. I know you probably don't hear this very often. I am a local government geek, and I have been so blessed and enjoyed my night here with your community and getting to see everything. It's my profession. I work for a different city, and I just really enjoyed all this. So thank you very much for letting me be on your agenda tonight. I am here to present a study that we did from Georgia State University, Andrew Young School for Public Policy, Councilwoman Gilliard. We were accepted into her proposal, and she has a vision for District Four that is unique, and asked us to go and research how we could preserve the identity of District Four, and that's what we're gonna talk about. The issues of concern that came up when we were speaking to residents and Councilmember Gilliard and in the scope of work was this issue of preserving District Four, and how can we actually preserve the land? How can we preserve this agricultural identity that residents have attached to District Four? And how can we embed this into our next generation? So we're gonna go over these three points. We're gonna try, I'm gonna try to go quickly for you. I'm sure this is not news to you. District Four is 29 square miles. It encompasses 16,000 of your residents, and 14% of the district is classified for agricultural usage. 98% of the district is classified for residential uses. I would like to point out that agricultural uses does encompass residential. If we were to right now, tomorrow, classify all of District Four ag, it would not stop the problem of sprawl. Right now, in the Fulton County code, you can still build residential in agricultural uses. You can build one house on a one-acre lot. These are the land use, I'm not, I'm not really gonna go over it very much, but basically right now in the 2035 Land Use Plan, there is no plan to preserve, there is plan to build, and there's plan to build different types of neighborhoods: agricultural, rural, suburban, and regional live, work, play, which is those high-density neighborhoods. You'd like to drive those density into those places. That's what you currently have. So our three options for preservation are conservation easements, acquisition, and transfer development of rights. Conservation easements can work, and in the U.S. right now, currently 28 million acres have been conserved through this method. It does work. All easements do not work the same, so there's not really a one-size-fits-all, and all land does not qualify for this. But basically, the landowner would give an easement over in exchange for a tax credit, a federal tax credit up to $250,000, and the state kind of sweetens the pot and gives you a 20, up to a 25% tax credit. So this could be applicable to some of your landowners, it would not be applicable to all of them. I do think that a tool on the table to discuss is acquisition by the City of Fulton County. I know that would require going out for a bond referendum, but there are tools that you can use to plan for the future, one being the public land trust. They can partner with your staff, they can create a plan, and they can connect you with federal dollars and state dollars. And a new state program went online this, just this year, it was voted in the previous year, and it's called the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, and they have matching grants up to $3 million. So there's a lot of resources on the table that you could get a budget together, and you could incrementally execute a plan if that was your wish. And the third thing that I would like to focus on in my short time is transfer development of rights. This is not an easy solution, but it definitely is a solution that I think works really well for this particular situation. This solution focuses development into a certain area. It takes it from one and focuses it into another. The landowner gets to retain the full property value as well. So in this scenario, the Mayor and City Council would look at your map, you would create a sending area, which in theory would be pieces of District Four, and then you would, in theory, look at your city, and it would be a receiving, there would be a receiving area. Some of those receiving areas could look like some of those new developments that were mentioned in the previous economic presentation earlier, some of those higher-density areas. You would attach development rights for every acre that's in the sending area. Those property owners would then sell those rights, effectively preserving no development that area, and the purchasers of those rights, the developers, they would spin those rights in the defined area that you choose. The rights would be very defined, and the area would be very defined. In the state of Georgia, there are currently four active TDR programs: Atlanta, and most recently, they use TDRs to save the Margaret Mitchell House. They sold those rights and transferred it over to Peachtree. The city of Milton, which is, I think, closely aligned, they have an identity around Equestrian, so they actually have their TDR program online. You can go fill out the application, they've simplified the process. They haven't executed many, but it's there. They're planning for the future. And the city of Madison has one. They are a city all of seven square miles, and they use a micro TDR program to fund their trails and micro parks. They have 4,000 residents, and they are using this tool in their toolkit to execute future planning, and it's not on the backs of their taxpayers, and I think that's amazing. So the second piece to this puzzle was gathering the community and figuring out what this identity means, because this is a recurring theme that we heard, is that people think very nostalgically of District Four and its rural area, and this, there's a lot of farms, a lot of smaller- a lot of smaller farms, and we recommend starting a farmer's market. And in the packet in our presentation that I think Councilmember Gilliard will be able to send you this week, we lay out a roadmap of how to do that. These are very inexpensive. We have given you the state guidelines and even some resources for your staff to point your staff to do this. We think that this would be a great outlet and a, really, a place activation for your And finally, in our, in the proposal that we sent back, we believe that partnering with some of your local schools and giving them the tools to teach agricultural-based curriculum will really help solidify this identity around District Four. We outlined a pilot program with the Chattahoochee Hills Charter School, and it, the core values are around growing, and it is all outlined in our presentation with a 16-week supplemental curriculum, and it's broken down K-2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. My two partners that worked on this presentation are not here with me, but they did that, and it's wonderful information, and it goes through some of the federal and state guidelines, and really, it's a, it's a great tool to have. So, we think that when you read the report and take these recommendations, we think that we have successfully figured out how to preserve District Four, gather the community around this idea of place activation and a farmer's market, and we can teach the next generation through agricultural-based curriculum. And we are really thankful that we got this opportunity, and, and thank you for allowing us to study your wonderful city.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gil, I think you were next.
No, no, I yielded to Gilliard.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard, go ahead.
I just want to thank you so very much, you and the other two students that are not here tonight, that really took a lot of time and energy to, you know, take a vision that was like this and just take it and blow it up. I really, really do appreciate all your hard work, and there's an awful lot in the document that we will be able to use, and I do plan, and I already mentioned it to the zoning consultants, that a lot of things that I want to sit down and talk with them about, that directly comes out of that document. So, it is a living, breathing document. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
One, one thing in your comments, I wanted people to understand, when you're talking about transfer development rights, that when you send land, for one, to a receiving area, that land that's been sent is to stay green to perpetuity.
Correct. Correct.
So, I want to make sure that everybody understands that.
And it, and it can be executed in several different ways of who holds the land, and those things are variables. You can have a land trust hold it. You yourself can hold it, which I think would probably be the most applicable in this situation. The thing about TDRs is, and like I said, I'm a local government person, is it does take political will and political consensus. So, defining those areas, sometimes for some mayor and council, it doesn't seem like this one, might be the biggest hurdle of where that density should go.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just had a question about, um, about property taxes. I know that when we, when you start preserving land in urban areas, the sort of adjacent areas, those property values can go way up sometimes, whether it's like Coronado Island in California or even like Chattahoochee Hills. And so, have you contemplated a plan for the housing values or the property taxes in those houses that are around all of these preserved areas?
So, that's not a part of our study, but I would like to, the projections of population for the city of South Fulton by 2035 are 1,003, or 130,000. And I think that when we preserve, the idea of preserving bigger lots of land is not that we're not going to be receiving citizens to help make up that tax difference, it's we're going to be congregating them in a different area, more, in a more dense area. So, it would be my hope that the increase of density in other areas would level out that. You're not going to be losing any tax base. That's a great question. I'm not a tax expert, so I can't speak to that, but the thought process is, is that you're still planning for the future, you're still going to have the same residents moving in at the same rate of 2% a year.
Right, and so, I wasn't talking about losing, and it's just something for us to think about. I'm putting that for our colleagues. I'm not talking about us losing a tax base. I'm actually talking about the value of the property in those, every, anytime you have a preservation district, the homes that are already existing there, the value sometimes skyrockets in those districts, and we know that very often, when families lose their homes or their properties, it's usually when that, there's that transfer from who's, the elder who's living there to the young person, because those, like that property, that property exemption, that homestead exemption doesn't transfer. So, if I inherit, if I inherit a farm near one of these areas, and my property taxes are double or triple what they were a few years ago, or what my parents or grandparents paid, I just want us to be thinking about that, because it is, it is always my goal that the people who live in South Fulton, as we improve this area, that we make sure that they can keep their houses and pass that generational wealth on.
Um, I don't, it's not included in the study. I would be happy to give you resources of other cities that have aging in place as a core value, and they build that into future developments, and they work with their developers to set aside certain pieces of developments for seniors of different ages to try to help with that. There's some different resources that I'd be happy to connect you with, but that's not a part of this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Next item is municipal court quarterly report.
Oh, yes, I have a presentation.
What did you say?
This is under presentations.
I know, we said the same thing a minute ago.
Okay.
Yeah. Come on.
Good evening. So, in your handouts, I have provided a draft of the annual report, just to bring you guys up to speed of some of the FY19 transactions we've taken place, but the quarterly report is what I wanted to focus on this evening. You can read that at your leisure, but it will be updated. It's an unaudited, uh, copy of the annual report that I'm working on. And first and foremost, let me definitely say thank you, guys, for working with me. It's been a minute trying to get everything together, getting the data together, just making sure we're on the right track for courts, making sure we're in compliance. But in the report, it is going to carry over from the previous report. Uh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Take whichever one.
I'll have a presentation. Okay. So, in Section 8 of the quarterly report, you will see it is the top five violations or citations that were written by the officers. Number one, since the streets have been certified, speeding has become our number-one citation written, which is definitely a revenue generating, followed by following too closely, failure to yield. So, the two of those combined would definitely yield accidents. So, if you look at those numbers, those are car accidents. The expired tag, and then for the criminal side, it would be shoplifting. In Section B, you will see the citations that were disposed of, and the bond forfeiture, that is persons who paid for their citations before appearing in court. The pretrial diversion, we've seen 90. We've had 216 tickets dismissed, which is a little on the high side, so we're going to work with Judge Willis on that. The bind overs, so those are cases that are outside of our jurisdiction. And then we have 262 people from the first quarter on probation, and out of the 90, we've had 29 people to complete the pretrial diversion program. And then on the back, of course, is the revenue. So, the total collected for the first quarter for FY20 is the 93,435, and then it's broken down into each part of the first quarter.
93,000.
So, you have two handouts. One is annual, and then one is the quarterly.
Oh, okay. Okay. Mr. Reed.
Hey, uh, when is our green team coming back?
Green team is in the works, is under the Department of Performance Management, and I can, Mr. Donald will definitely chime in on that.
Yeah, so it's under, I guess, construction right now, along with all of those, I guess we're calling them diversion programs. So, we'll have a rollout and an update to the council in February about the status, and we plan to have it up and running by the spring in time for all of the outdoor activities and volunteer opportunities.
And then, just lastly, what is the, I don't, this is a delicate question. I don't know how to answer, ask it, but I know we've been moving around court facilities.
Yes.
How are we doing with our backlog of cases and...
Funny you should mention that. Judge Willis actually called me this evening. We have a great plan. So, currently, we're, we're working through our MOU with East Point. I've sent it to our city attorney, so we're going to just work through the logistics. We're scheduled to start there next Thursday, so court dates have shifted. I know when I first came on, we were at six days a week. We went to three. We're going back to four, only because of logistics. East Point is only available on Thursday, which is fine with us, so we'll be there on Thursdays at 1:30. However, we're only there the first three Thursdays of the month. Their last week is a trial week, so we're not able to use the facility.
And lastly, how do, how do, how do you coordinate, one, with the police when tickets are written, and then people who had tickets that said to go to, like, Union City, like, how do you, how does that communication work?
So, for me, customer service is huge. So, what we've done is we've sent out reschedule notices, even if you got the ticket, you called in, just as a, as a backtrack to make sure, to ensure that people are not showing up to Union City on a Wednesday. We've sent out reset notices to everybody who's been reset again, so they should have gotten, like, two notices to report to East Point.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to piggyback off the green team. Is it possible to, when people are charged with fines out there for littering and or dumping, to get a pay a fine and pick up trash, instead of a pay a fine or pick up the trash?
Um, I would have to divert, that would be the, I guess, maybe sometimes the solicitor's take on it, on how she wants to prosecute, or the judge's discretion, but it's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, please look at that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, council member, we met, and that's one of the reasons why we've kind of taken some time to really, uh, look at that program, because they're, they're trying to develop standards of, you know, when you have this type of offense or this type of fine, then you're able to trigger the green team versus being able to work or do both. I mean, but they're trying to develop different levels at which those triggers happen, and so they haven't been able to do that just yet, and they've expanded their diversion offerings, so some people wouldn't necessarily pick the green team as their first choice. So, we will be bringing something back that's fairly detailed and update of how we're going to roll out all of these programs, but right now, they're in the process of just fine-tuning them. I also wanted to correct something for the record, so these are not necessarily revenue-generating. We don't, we've talked about multiple times about our court system being operated very differently than some of the newer cities when they first came online, where they were much maligned about using speed traps and things like that to increase the city's revenue and have an undue burden on our citizens. That's not the way we operate court, and so while we do generate revenue from fines, our number-one option is to uphold the law, but also not necessarily put an additional burden on our residents. I just wanted to add that clarification.
And I agree with the, the non-revenue generating. I just want to make sure the people who are responsible for littering and dumping actually goes back out there and pick up the trash with no other option.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gons?
So, that was my concern, and thank you for clearing that up. My question is, is that have we did any citations for trash? Because I don't see any of that posted here. So, are we not citing people for...
Is that for...
Or catching them dumping with the cameras that we have?
I don't think we're catching them. I haven't seen anything on the cameras, but I can definitely reach out to whoever operates the, the click and see click fix and see if they, if you said there's cameras. I'm unaware that there were cameras, and see how we can move forward to prosecute or write citations for those persons.
So, with this green team, I mean, we've been working on this for a while, and it's almost like, is it really going to come to fruition? Do we have a date in mind or...
No, ma'am. So, while it is something that has taken a while, I like to remind people that we're a very new city, and we have a very new court system, and we want to get it right. And so, I think some of you went to the training with GMA this past weekend around, about courts. You know, these, creating these programs have caused many a city lots of heartache, and so we have had some experiences in our court system previously, where when things aren't done right, it really comes back to bite us in a major way. And so, these diversion programs, I'll tell you, it is me specifically, I have stopped some of these things from moving forward, because the standard operating procedures were not strong enough or in line. And so, I will not allow it to go forward until it's appropriate, because many things have been kind of dropped to the wayside as we had transition in judges, court administrators, and other staff, and so our focus right now is delivering the best court services, and then Phase Two is related to these diversion programs. And so, we are moving very quickly to move them forward and establish them, but they're not as easy to implement as you might believe.
Well, I know certainly we have a lot of trash that we need to get up off these streets, but is there not a program that is already existing in another city that we can model or take some pieces from to kind of help expedite it, because it just needs to get off the ground?
Yes, ma'am, but I would say that, that this is, that's very similar to the revenue-generating piece. We're also not creating indentured servitude, and so the, these volunteers and community-service-based activities aren't necessarily supposed to supplement our issues with illegal dumping. That's where we have to provide additional resources and activities for transportation. So, we have done some things. Remember, we partnered with Aratropolis, and you have those, you know, the new signage, the new activities, and the funds related to those new pathways, but when it comes to this diversion program, again, those rules and regulations, which we'll make sure to share to you, are not very easy to implement, so I, I just want to provide that type of clarity.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Ms. Rob, for you, go. Let me just ask one question.
Mayor, push the mic up.
With due respect to Ms. Willis, are the, no, I'm talking about you. Are the school cameras, are those tickets in here, or are we past the 30-day probation there?
I can talk unofficially about it. It was not a court project. We got, we got in on it on the tail end. They are official. I think they are outside of their...
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
We actually started around the first of this year, Mayor, and we have a little over 1,200 citations from one school zone, and so we're in the process of going through validating all of those citations right now, but at Seaborn Lee, I think we have a little over 1,200 right now. And so, that's actually coming through our vendor, and that's just since the beginning of the month.
I get you. So, it would be part of your report, then?
It would be part of our report, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Councilmember Rob, Councilmember Rob.
Thank you for, Mr. Donald, for touching on some things that I actually wanted to say. I actually had the opportunity to participate in a municipal court training this past weekend, and one thing I would like you to do is use the city assessment of best practices to fully evaluate our court system, because we want to make sure it's on track. GMA has a wonderful guide, very detailed, and, and I would like to actually have you bring that back to the council, you know, within the next nine, 60 to 90 days, where you've done a complete assessment compared to that guide.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's what I was referring to, so it's in process right now, and so that is a part of the whole on the diversion program, and so before we implement those things, well, I mean, you went to the training, so you know the structure that has to be in place, the responsiveness, all the standard operating procedures, and so much of that is in place, and our structure is very much like that guide in other cities, but there are some areas that we have to improve, and we're working on that now.
Okay. Do we need official action or the council for you to bring that back to us?
So, it's, so the first report out, I'm expecting to do next month, but the assessment will be done in April.
Okay, so no action needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Willis?
Chief Meadows, when are, I know we said we were going to roll out the rest of the speed enforcement cameras and other school zones. Right now, they're just in Seaborn Lee, right?
Right, we have four more cameras. The schedule will come online early next week. We've gotten the permits from the state to, to roll those out, and so they're getting ready to start construction on those next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. What, Chief, Chief? Hold on, hold on. Sorry. Come here. I did it. Okay, go ahead. I didn't see it. Councilmember Reed?
Where were those locations of the other four cameras? If you could share that information?
It's Campbellton, Haightville Charter, I believe it's one. It's Campbellton, Haightville Charter.
Haightville Charter?
No, no, Haight, yeah, Haightville Charter. It's actually in the city of South Fulton.
Right.
And Campbellton, I can't remember what the other two, but I'll shoot them two.
But one over is in the area of where it has traffic is in District...
But one over is in the area where high traffic is in District...
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you all so much. And Claire?
Mayor and council, we need to adopt the agenda, council agenda.
Okay. I was gonna say in a motion. Or did we do it individually?
If you call them off, I will quote the motion, and you can vote it one time. Any items needing to be moved?
Anybody got anything they want to move, though? No.
Okay, so the previous motion to amend the council agenda to move the items after the public comments, does that still stand?
Wait, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
The previous motion to amend the agenda to move the work session items to after the public comments, does that still stand?
We already did them.
You already did them.
Not all of them, we got two more.
Why don't we do that one now? Can we do that one now? What's the one we got remaining?
She's asking, does it still stand? It's two, or is it one?
Two items.
It's still standing.
Okay.
Yes, it's still standing.
So you need a motion to approve the council agenda as printed with the...
Okay, he wants, she now wants to add something.
Add?
I wanna add it to finance.
I can't hear you.
I wanna add something to finance.
Okay.
I want to add moving legal, the legal money that's in contingency to the legal line, whatever is left.
That's a discussion.
You gotta do that with a resolution.
Does that require a resolution, Madam Chair? Do I have to have a resolution for that?
It's budgeted.
It's not an agenda item.
I wanna add it to the agenda. You can't do that.
So you wanna add discussion on that item?
I wanna add to the agenda, moving the funds that are in the contingency fund to the legal line.
You have, that's a discussion.
The money that is budgeted in contingency to move it to the legal line. Could you, this is point of information. Could we talk about that in the financial? What are you saying, Mr.? Ms. Cleese, what are you saying? What are you, what's your issue? I think litigation, I think you have a conversation about it. But so far as voting on it, I don't think you can do that.
Can we discuss it in, if it deals with litigation?
Yes, we can.
Can we discuss it so I can get more clarity on...
Because it's an approciate, it's an appropriation, but anyway.
It's already appropriated.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the council agenda. Is that where we are? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the council agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the council agenda as amended.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I'm counting four and three. Nays. Mr. Reeves, Ms. Willis, Ms. Gomes, and Ms. Rau.
Next on the agenda is approval of council special call meeting minutes, January 10th.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the council's special call meeting minutes from January 10th.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? That passes, our four, three. Mr. Reeves?
For the minutes?
Mr. Reeves, Ms. Willis, Ms. Gomes, and Ms. Rau. Ms. Rau.
Next is council approval of council work session meeting minutes, January 14th.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the council work session minutes from January 14th, 2020.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, four, three, same vote.
Next is approval of council regular meeting minutes, January 14th.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the council's regular meeting minutes from January 14th, 2020.
Properly moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those in favor of the minutes? That passes.
Next on the agenda is public hearings.
Who's the public comment?
I'm sorry?
Public comment?
Public hearings.
Before that?
Yes. Public hearings.
Call the public hearing, please.
The first public hearing is M-19-004, seeking a modification request for massage parlor on Old National Highway.
It's my understanding that we had two. Am I right, two public hearings on this issue?
Yes.
Three? Okay, so we're, at this time, I'm gonna call for a vote, a motion.
I move that we approve staff recommendations for M-19-004 for a public, for a modification request in massage parlor for Old National.
Just a second. Properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
I just have quick discussion.
Go ahead.
I really want us, and we just talked about the zoning. The zoning rewrite, I think those folks are gone. I really want us to come up with a new term to distinguish massage spas from massage parlors.
Okay. Let's vote, please. All those in favor? That's, oh, five, two. You got, Ms. Cleese?
Yes. Next item is Z-19-005 for seeking a modification request to change from AG1 to C2 on Jonesboro Road.
Right.
Stan, go ahead.
Thank you. For application Z-19-005, this is a rezoning request for 3560 Jonesboro Road. Let me just, this. In regard to the case backs, the site is zoned AG1. It is located in District 7. The subject property is vacant and heavily wooded at this time. It is the applicant's intent to rezone for commercial use for an auto dealership with restaurants and retail space. And the applicant is Robert Kelly, and he is here tonight to speak in regard to the application. This map shows you the subject property. The surrounding area is largely AG1, R4, and CUP, but it is important to note that there is areas of C1 and C2 zoning directly across from the subject property. This is the concept plan that was submitted. It shows the location of the automotive dealership, as well as the restaurants. There are two MARTA bus stops located on the same side of the road as the site, and this site does have two proposed entrances to the development. This is an aerial view of the site. Shows that it's heavily wooded, but you can see the Dollar General that is across the street. And there is a small daycare facility located in proximity. The staff does recommend approval with conditions. These conditions do exclude certain uses on the property, including personal care services, gas stations, garage, automobile specialty shops, and things of that nature. This is conditioned to the site plan. And prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit, there are several environmental factors that the applicant needs to address. The applicant needs to comply with the requirements for the tree protection that we have in the city of South Fulton, as well as the landscape strips that are a part of the overlay district. There's also a condition that sidewalks shall be constructed along the frontage of the development to ensure pedestrian access. When this went to the planning commission, the planning commission did recommend approval with staff conditions. They made two important notes. They did emphasize the 15-foot landscape strip required in the overlay district. That was identified in Condition 6 in the staff report. And they also asked for a revision for Condition 1 to exclude discount stores similar to the Dollar Store and to exclude liquor stores. That concludes my report.
All right, I open up the public hearing. All those who are, four to my left, come up, be to my left. If you're against, to my right. Four, against. Made them look at it the wrong way, okay. Are you the applicant? You have a total of 10 minutes for everybody.
Good evening, my name is Robert Kelly. This is Sarah Kelly. Thank you for allowing us to speak here with you tonight. Mayor, if I can, I do have just some pictures of the property. May I? So we're gonna be brief, but we're just gonna start with a brief background of how we got here. Once again, I am representing the landowner at this property, S. Frank Simpson. Sarah's going to give you a little bit of background of how we did the research and analysis of why this would actually make a lot of sense to go here. And then I'll come back and tell you specifically why, where we got to where we are right now.
All right, just want you to understand that the total of 10 minutes for the other two over there.
So as my husband mentioned, I'm gonna kinda give a brief background of how we got here. And he'll be here for, to give you a more detailed report and also to answer your questions. When my husband and I graduated from UGA Law School, we, the world was our oyster. We could've gone anywhere in the world. But we decided to come back home to South Fulton. When I moved from New York 13 years ago, when I was adopted, my very first home was off of Quill Road, right here off Old National. And so when we graduated from law school, we wanted to come back home and bring the knowledge and the resources back here to our neighborhood. And so one of the things that I wanted to talk to you briefly about is something that the planning committee mentioned in their staff report. And they repeatedly made mention to the 2035 comprehensive plan, which I'm sure you all are intimately aware of. So according to the, our city of South Fulton's website, we're currently in the process of making minor updates in order to adapt it as our own. But the 2035 comprehensive plan is the guiding document when reviewing rezoning requests like the one before you. Now, as it was mentioned, the current status of the property is zoned as AG1. And according to the comprehensive plan, the description of what that's consistent with the AG1 is the agricultural neighborhood, which represents the rural land in South Fulton, defined by agricultural uses in very low residential areas, and involves commercial uses consistent of large, open land, intensive farming practices such as horse or timber farms. Now, I don't know about y'all, but I haven't seen any horses trotting down 138 recently or crossing the Dollar Store. Now, in the report, the planning and zoning division also classify the property in compliance with the 2035 plan as a suburban neighborhood. However, the suburban neighborhood does not support the current classification as AG1. So even if we were trying to keep the classification the same, it's not in compliance with the 2035 comprehensive plan and what we see and what we want to see accomplished in the next 15 years in our city in particular. So the plan also anticipates a continued gradual increase of our population, which would need to cater to the largest and second-largest demographic, which would include the family forming, which, I'm six months pregnant, so I think I would classify as that, and the peak earning categories, who are likely to age in place. Now, what's happening with our peak earning categories is that they're earning money, but unfortunately, they're not spending it right here at home. And so rezoning this would give them an opportunity to do that and keep money right here in our backyard. I know for me, one of the things that I'm looking forward to is loading up the car with my daughter Lily and my soon-to-be son Levi. And as any parent of young children would say, they would hear their kids say, "Mommy, Daddy, are we there yet?" And I'm looking forward to looking back in that backseat and saying, "Yes, we're here," instead of, "No, baby. We gotta fight through Atlanta traffic a little bit longer to get where we're going."
Really briefly, I just wanna go through the slides that I gave you guys and just the pictures. So once again, this, the proposal of this site, there's three definite things that are actually proposed. It's fine dining restaurants. What, all the people that we've been speaking to are fine dining restaurants. We've heard from the community that they don't want more fast foods. They don't, because we have it all alongside in Union City. So what we want to, this part to do is have like a Camp Creek on the south side, which we don't have. Right now, if we want any type of fine dining, we have to go either to Fayetteville. We have to drive 15, 20 minutes, and if it's traffic, even more, to go all the way to Exit 2 to go to Camp Creek. And so when we were speaking to the community, this is something that they said that they wanted in their area. We also were looking at retail shops such as Hobby Lobby's, Michael's Clothing Stores. As you can see, I'm trying to speed up because we have little time. There's a long laundry list of things that we have already conceded to not go here. So this would be no liquor stores, no discount stores, no nail shops, no automobile specialty shops. All those things are already pre-excluded from this area. So the one thing that I think has been giving most people anxiety or has given the most pushback is the automobile dealership. And initially, we did not want this in the area. If you guys go to that slide that says, "Why car dealership", if you look, there's these huge power lines that, in the beginning of the property. When we started speaking to different people and different businesses and saying, "Hey, would you be interested in coming to this area?", most of them said, "We don't wanna be in this spot because of these, because of the aesthetics." So we said, "Okay, what can we put there?" And the majority of people that we were talking to that said that they wouldn't mind coming here was automobile dealerships. And so that's the only reason why that is actually part of the concept plan. And if you look at the concept plan, it starts off with automobile dealership. It kinda zooms into the next thing. Jonesboro Road is a big part of that. As anyone that's traveled on Jonesboro Road knows that it's extremely vast. There's been plenty of car accidents at the Jonesboro Road, Highway 138 intersection. It's extremely dangerous, because people are driving too fast and there's no traffic light. When we spoke to people at GDOT, they said that as long as this area stays AG1, which is all trees, there's no reason to put a light there. So this property being rezoned, C2, is important and actually is vital to us even having the type of traffic, you know, control in this area. So with that, I'll, I'll yield my time.
Come on up. Come on up, you want something to say? You have about 300, 300, 300, 300, 3 minutes and 40 seconds.
All right, my name is Monique Crummy, and I live in District 7. I've been a homeowner there for a little over 12 years. One of the main reasons why I am against the car dealership being there is because I feel we have too many. He mentioned something about potentially receiving a light if DLT says that they would consider a light. Unless they can guarantee that, I don't believe it and I don't trust it. It's very dangerous coming out of my subdivision and often... I believe the four are supposed to be speaking at this time? I'm sorry, they told us over here was against it?
No.
So you called me up, so.
Yeah, give him his time back.
So it's supposed to be the four?
Are you four against, or...
We were told to go over here.
Okay, let me say now, you don't get to change. Put his time back on whatever it was, Cory. And then we'll just, we'll start with the, with the against.
Okay, so you all... Go over there and then start over? Okay, no problem.
And so just to introduce him, you can stop my time. This is actually the owner of the daycare that is directly next to this site, and he's speaking for the development. He's one of the people that's most affected.
Good afternoon. We've been in the daycare business going on... I'm sorry, my name is Aston Peert. We've been at the daycare location for almost 20 years. And we've watched the area grow, and we've also seen the speed of the street. It hasn't changed in the total time that we've been there. I think this property next door could be used in a good way with this development that would help grow the community, especially when we're talking about, you know, dining areas and places that families can go to enjoy their outing for a meal. Again, we watch the neighborhood grow. We've seen houses come in the area. They do need some other venues other than driving to Camp Creek or driving to Fayetteville, or, you know, going down Old National. That's that one area, there's nothing out there but us and a few churches. So there's, there's a need for that. If you go into, you can go into Union City, but again, you're gonna, you're gonna get fast food. City of South Fulton, I think, is a quality city that has grown quite a bit and has a lot of things to offer. And I think in this, in this area, they can give them, give the neighborhood and the community a good spot where they can enjoy, you know, something else other than speeding on traffic on 138.
Okay, thank you. Cory, you wanna, you might wanna save some of your time for rebuttal, because they're coming at you. All right, that's about a minute and 43 seconds for rebuttal. Come on up, Mark. Come on up, Mike.
This is Michael Venable, District 6. This proposal is nothing but an extension of Union City. That is car dealer heaven. We don't need to be copying that. I want you to look at the facts of the case. It's a Volvo dealership. That's already been determined. That's definite, or fully definite. We're play-playing and saying, "Okay, I'm going to get this restaurant or this store, whatever." That's all speculative. Look in your mind, car dealership to Memorial Drive, Union City, all of these places, have you ever seen any fine dining establishment sitting right beside them? Have you ever seen any decent store sitting beside them? This is absolutely absurd, you know, I love my alumnis, and yet I didn't realize that we'd have to go and shake and hug later on in there, but this is just inappropriate for the area. This is the same problem that the other areas that the cities have where they're combating warehouses. This is nothing but a warehouse under a different name. These are not sustainable, we're starting to go to, you know, car lots and things to where we're coming back online and doing those sort of things. Volvo was already in Union City and left, we're just going back and recirculating something that is bad for the community. And like I said before, no one is going to purposely set up shop beside a car dealership outside of the things that we don't need, liquor stores, personal cares, something that nobody else wants. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alvin Reynolds resides at 585 King's Place, that's Riverdale, District 7. I'm going to just go right into some of the facts. Did the research on this development, again, it was determined that it would be a Volvo coming in. Volvo has a history of not hanging around long, and I'm not sure if that's the type of development we want in our city. Number two is, if you look at that property and you look at the demographic of it, the car lot, the car dealership is going to take up majority of the property. So retail and restaurants, you're going to try to squeeze those in. I'm not sure there's going to be enough room to even do that, you know. Why not start with the retail and restaurants? If we want to do anything, we want to make a difference, let's do it that way. One other thing, too, is that you cannot really approve this because of staff's recommendations about there's no garage, no oil-changing stations and so forth, all of that's in the language. This development brings all of that into play. So I would, you know, I beseech you to look at that and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, ma'am? Oh, we can hear you.
All right. Should I repeat? All right, my name is Monique Crummy, District 7. I'll actually go a different angle since you heard the first part. Ironically enough, I actually work in the auto industry, I'm a nationwide sales trainer. So I travel all over the country training car dealerships on software. And being all over the country, seeing different dealerships, I've trained Lamborghini, Porsche, Mercedes, et cetera. I've never, ever, ever seen a fine dining restaurant at any of them. Maybe Mercedes-Benz of Manhattan, they had a restaurant in the building, like on the third floor, but aside from that, there's not really anything within the same lot. Potentially, you may find something across the street, a couple blocks down, but not in the same lot, so I don't buy it. I don't see us getting any quality restaurants, I don't see DOT bringing us a light any faster, and I see it being dangerous for us. That's, so I say no.
Okay. Sure.
My name is Chadrick Waddleton, I live in District 7. I'm here to speak against the construction of another dealership. If the goal of the property owner is to develop the land for the benefit of the community, it should be something for the community, for example, a grocery store. In a grocery store where they also serve the retail and the restaurants, they're more so than a dealership as an anchor. Additionally, I lived in that area for about 12 years already. I would welcome a grocery store personally, because currently, I have to either go to, I go to either Union City, or I go to Fayetteville, I go to Fairburn. Well, my money is not being spent in my city when I do that. So if that area has a grocery store, that's where I'm going to spend my money. In addition, most of all, a dealership facility that's built there is there permanently. It would never be capable of redevelopment just because, based on environmental issues. So the only thing that could replace it would be another dealership, and I don't think that's a benefit for our community. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sir, you have a minute and...
It was a white car. Yeah, a minute and 43 for the rebuttal. Okay, so just to address some of the comments, a lot of people saying that, you know, they haven't seen this before, they haven't seen this type of development, so we can't do it. A lot of people didn't see this city being optioned, and here we are. So just because you can't see something doesn't mean that it's not possible, that's one. Two, Cobb County has Battery Park, has Cheesecake Factory, Maggiano's, all in the same area that they have automobile dealerships. So that's a perfect example. We have not settled on Volvo coming in here. We said that we were looking at options such as Volvo because it's a little bit of higher-end dealership, so it was, the name was brought up in the Planning Committee meeting, and people just kind of ran with it, but I just want to say that we haven't locked into Volvo. And then the last part is that, you know, for anyone that wants to buy a car, the gentleman said that it's an extension of Union City. If you want to buy a car right now and you live on that side, where are you going? You're not spending your money with South Fulton. You have to spend your money with Union City or College Park, anywhere on that side of town. So my option, my thing is, if we're going to spend our money to buy a car, why not spend it where it's actually affecting us as a tax base? Right now, we need development like this, this would be good for our city, this will be good for, you know, to have employment in this area, and it'll be good for, you know, the tax base in going from being so heavily residential tax base to commercial tax base. So, you know, in closing, I think this is great for the area. I know that some people can't see it, but I'm not looking at people that can't see it in your packets. The last couple pages are filled with people that came to them, that actually came to the meeting, that live a half mile in, and those are the ones that actually agree with it. So just because you have some dissenters, that's not the only voices that are here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mike?
Real briefly there, in order to put this together, somebody had to come back and say, "Okay, I'm going to do a car dealership." That wouldn't just be pop out of the blue or somewhere before that in there. Then again, I say, that's just not the direction you want to go, you know. If we didn't have any warehouses in this city, I don't think anybody would be jumping up and down crying and then saying, "Oh, boo hoo, boo hoo." You know, there's certain things that we don't need and certain things that we do. As I've been out here with this decades in that, and the same things come out, that we have the same problematic, not, non, what do I want to say, sustainable developments that come through that actually make this Old National corridor and that area not prosper to what it should be, and so that needs to stop. This is not appropriate for this community, and we urge you to vote no.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to hold this project. There are several people in our district who highly anticipated being here, and many of them, I believe, probably went over to Stonewall Tale for this meeting. It would probably be flooded with people from District 7 had we been on the other side of town, and I think that a lot of them don't know that we're even here. I would like to say one thing, I think that there's room for you guys to try to get in concert when it comes to what is going to be on the property, building the retail first as opposed to the dealership. I saw you, Mr. Kelly, Attorney Kelly, do a Sullivan nod when that was brought up by one of the individuals who are against it. So maybe you can use this time to reach out more and try to get in concert with the people in the area, but I just think that it's unfair to take action tonight when many people think that we're on Stonewall Tale having a meeting. Another thing is, that light, I've been out with GDOT and people from our district. A mother of, I believe, three kids, lost her life right where you're trying to build this, and there's a blind curve coming around 138 right there. So I don't even know how or what the solution is. They've been pulling me and Yusuf can tell you, and Ms. Jill Lindsay can all attest to what we've been trying to do to try to get something there in place. I understand that you're saying that this may be a contributing factor. If it is, I would love to know who you spoke to so that we could try to forge forward with that conversation, because it's been to no avail for the past two and a half years. So I hope that my colleagues will support me in holding this item.
The property moved, and second question, Ms. Willis?
So, when I look at these pictures, it's a power easement. Are you all trying to build something on the power easement side?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's a power, the folder that you gave us, the pictures of the property?
Right, yeah, so...
It's a power easement.
So that's actually not the property, that's right, what's adjacent from properties. That's actually not the property. That's what's right next to the property. So I've shown you that, I put that to show you that when you, in the beginning of the property, a lot of people didn't want to come in because that's what's right next to them. And so a lot of the restaurants were looking at and say, "We don't want to be right next to that." And that's why we said, "Okay, what about a car dealership?" And that's why that's there.
And the other thing is that you mentioned that if we buy a car in Union City or College Park, the city would benefit, and that's because local option sales tax, as long as you buying, spending money in Fulton County, we're going to still get our $22 million or whatever it was, so...
Got you, I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Kelly, then we'll vote after Mr. Kelly.
You can say it, Mr. Kelly. Just a quick question. So I've heard, I've heard from everyone but you that a Volvo dealership is coming, is that a commitment that you have?
Right, so we have not agreed, they've showed interest, but we have not said this is who we want to bring in. That came from when we had the planning meeting, they were asking about, "Well, who have you been talking to?", and we said, "We've been talking to people like Volvo, and we named some others." And because that was the only name they heard, that's kind of what was ran with. But they have expressed interest.
Is there, because we also talked about fine dining establishments, are there any restaurateurs that have expressed interest?
We have had some meetings with several restaurant individuals, but they're waiting on this process before they move forward.
All right, so what I would suggest is...
Can I, sorry, and I can submit letters of interest that, from the people that we spoke to, if that would help you guys make a decision?
Two, one suggestion that I heard was that we might start with the restaurants, and so perhaps in this recess, we could get commitments from some restaurateurs that might, you know, help.
All right, let's vote, please. What's the motion? The motion is to hold. The motion is to hold, let's vote. That, we're going to hold that unanimous. Madam Clerk?
Next item is public hearing for Z19-006, seeking a modification and to rezone from AG1 to CUP for a residential subdivision.
All right. Wait, just to pull that slide up here. This case, Z19-006, it's a rezoning request at West Dubbs Road and Cascade Palmetto Highway. We have also included a concurrent variance to reduce setbacks and landscape buffers to 25 feet for the recreational amenity area. This was deferred by the Planning Commission in November for 30 days and was addressed in December. And tonight, I will focus specifically on sharing kind of the activities between the staff report and the Planning Commission recommendation to explain any issues that might have caused confusion therein. That said, the site is currently zoned AG1, it is located in District 2, it is currently vacant and wooded. The applicant is here tonight, Jordan Edwards of the Galloway Law Group, on behalf of the Curly Family Homes. It is the intent to rezone for 62 single-family homes. This map shows you the surrounding area, the AG1 property in the middle, surrounded by a number of CUP zone parcels currently. This is the site plan. This site plan was revised from the original site plan. The applicant has worked in good faith with the community through the public participation process to add an amenity area that includes a basketball court and a gazebo, and you can see that on the site plan. It's approximately 38.24 acres, currently vacant. There is a traffic light at the intersection, however, there are no sidewalks, there's no access by MARTA. And again, the updated site plan does reflect the amenity area that the applicant has been working with the community to provide. This shows an aerial view of the site, you can see the wooded tract, but you can also see surrounded by the existing single-family residential in that area. And so just to kind of walk briefly through the staff conditions, when this was first presented, the staff recommended approval with conditions that limited to 62 single-family houses and conditioned it to the site plan. There is a requirement for staggered front setbacks, initially staff recommended five-foot staggered front setbacks. There's a requirement that trees be planted in every yard, and then as is typical with the CUP, the minimum dimensional requirements were also specified at the time. It's a list of conditions here. The staff conditions did address the exterior cladding materials and the required traffic improvements that were specified by the traffic engineer. There also were some conditions at the time recommended related to the amenity area and the mailbox kiosk. So when this went forward to the Planning Commission, the motion at the Planning Commission was to approve with staff recommendations, although they made a few minor tweaks. So they requested that the five-foot setback be reduced to a three-foot, excuse me, the five-foot stagger be reduced to a three-foot stagger, and they made some proposed modifications to the minimum dimensional requirements. So the front yard would be 25 feet as opposed to 20, the side yards would be seven and a half feet as opposed to 10, and the minimum building separation was reduced from 15 feet to 20 feet. At the time of the hearing, the applicant also raised some issues regarding reducing the required landscape areas and buffers around the amenity area. And so at the time, we wanted to make sure that Mayor and Council could hear that, so we advertised that as a concurrent variance. That's not something that's expressly called out for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on to reduce those. So we wanted to make sure that we honored the intent of what came forward at the Planning Commission hearing, so that is the recommendation on the variance. At the time of the Planning Commission hearing, the only information that was submitted is the applicant would have to lose one to two lots in regard to reducing those setbacks around the amenity area. But that being said, when you look at the criteria for variance, that doesn't really fall in line with the variance criteria. However, I believe tonight, the applicant plans to address how they think that they do meet the criterions to reduce those setbacks and buffers around the recreational area. The final condition from the Planning Commission was to add an eight-foot fence around the basketball court. And so again, the recommendation was approval with staff conditions with those modifications that we ran through. In regard to the concurrent variance, staff has suggested that it may be a candidate for denial based on the initial information presented at the Planning Commission hearing regarding hardship. But again, I believe that the applicant is going to speak to that tonight, so we mostly just wanted to make sure that you understood that the Planning Commission recommendation was to approve the reduction of those setbacks and landscape buffer requirements.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. The applicant here? All right, I'm going to make this easy now, so all four of the applicants, y'all come over, right over here. The other one, y'all come over here. All right, go ahead.
Just me, huh? Good evening, everybody, and my name is Jordan Edwards, 3500 Lenox Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30326. I'm here representing the applicant in this. Joe Curly is here, Curly Family Homes, a company that he started with his dad. They've been active in Fulton County and Cobb County building houses, they've done some stuff in Fairburn, close by. Jeff Smith is here, too, he's our engineer, in case y'all have any more technical questions. Sorry. Sorry about that. I know that there's a lot of time to, or not a lot of time to get through a lot of information, so I'm going to have to speak kind of fast, and I apologize for that, but I'm happy to answer any questions. As staff, as Allison pointed out to you earlier just now, this is... As staff, as Allison pointed out to you earlier just now, this is a zoning that makes a lot of sense. It's 38 acres that is zoned agricultural right now, but is surrounded by the Cup District, surrounded by single-family houses, subdivisions. So what the district that we've requested is the same district as all those. The proposed development is similar to what's already out there in terms of lot sizes and house sizes. So as a zoning, as a proposed development, it matches what's out there, it matches the conference of plan, the zoning map. So it's a, I think it's a constitutional zoning and constitutes a property. As far as the conditions go, when we got to Planning Commission for the second time, staff recommended 21 conditions. Planning Commission recommended some changes to those regarding some, and that goes to some feedback that we had from the community about our setbacks. We accept all of those conditions as amended by the Planning Commission. One exception to that I wanted to make note of quickly, they added condition number 22, which was to put a fence, an eight-foot fence around the basketball court. We totally understand why they wanted to do that and to prevent balls from bouncing outside of the area. We just want a little bit more flexibility on how to do that, potentially just add in there the alternative of either a fence or a vegetative barrier, a screen, a hedge, something that accomplishes the exact same thing, but might look a little bit more appealing to people coming in and out of their neighborhoods instead of a chain link fence. But other than that, the conditions are all good to us as amended by the Planning Commission. The other thing I want to get to, though, quickly is the variances. We did not propose the variances in the beginning. We actually got to the Planning Commission meeting in December, and we're surprised to learn that variances are on the table. And I think it's because of that that we weren't able to put information about the property into the record. Allison mentioned that there wasn't a lot of information about the hardship, about what would justify the variances, and that's why. It didn't really come from us. But that doesn't mean it's not true. At this property, and you'll see this in the site plan that's in your information, there is a stream that starts in the middle of the property, heads south, and then makes a right angle turn east through the property. And as a result of that stream, the presence there and the stream buffers, almost half of the property is not even buildable. So an enormous amount of property is in stream buffer. We've got pretty serious topography issues as well. You can imagine with that stream, there's a lot of peaks and valleys, slopes going down to the stream. All of that topography combines to sort of dictate how we can lay out the subdivision, where we can put the cul-de-sacs, where we can put the houses around it. One more thing about this property is that it, at the corner, the northwest corner of the property, there is a signalized intersection of a state highway where the speed limit is 55 miles per hour. That dictates where we're gonna have our point of access for cars to this subdivision. So all of these things combined make this a very exceptional, very extraordinary piece of property with a lot of challenges to it. The variances that have come to you are only to be able to develop an amenity area that we didn't show originally. Originally, we, our proposal was just the houses and no amenity area. But when we spoke with the community leaders from Walden Park, Legacy Appleton Farms, Amherst, and with the Clifton Dell Community Club, we got that feedback about the setbacks, which made it into the conditions, but also about this amenity area. Learned that they really wanted to see something to appeal to older kids, and so that's where, through those conversations, the idea of a basketball court came in. It's only the basketball court that requires variances. So because of those exceptional and extraordinary conditions of the property, variances are justified in this case. If they're denied, if they're not granted, we're not gonna be able to build that basketball court, build the amenity space that our neighbors asked us for. So that's the hardship that we suffer. So the variances that are on the table can be approved by this body tonight. What do the variances need to accomplish? One thing is we need to reduce a lot separation distance between the basketball court and residential property lines from 100 feet to 25 feet. Second thing we need to do is reduce the landscape strip between the basketball court and the private streets from 40 feet to 25 feet. The last thing that we need to make happen for the basketball court to be a reality here is to ensure that the landscape strip applies to that street frontage between the basketball court and the street to the north of the amenity area. The amenity area is actually on a corner, and there's a side street, a side private street here on the far eastern side of the amenity area. That's where we would put the parking that's required for the basketball court. It's a long way away from where the court would be. As a result, you know, I don't think that the landscape strip serves the same purpose on that side of the amenity area as it does on the north side of the amenity area. We still want to provide a landscape strip, we still want to provide separation between the lots and the basketball court, but those are the changes that we need to be able to make that actually happen. So just to wrap up, it's the rezoning that makes a lot of sense in this area. It's development that is similar to what is in the area. And the variances that are part of this application would enable us to build an amenity that our neighbors, the subdivisions around us and the Clifton Dell Community Club, have asked us to include. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Speaker for you.
Well, reserve a time after.
Mayor Edwards, Council. My name is Nikki Cooper, and I'm the HOA president for the community Legacy at Palmetto Farms. We are located directly across the street from the proposed lot. First, I want to recognize the Curly family and also their legal representation for working with us in the community. They've been out many times. They've kept in contact with us via electronic emails and other communications to make sure we did get our buy-in. And we did work with them, particularly the Clifton Dell Community Club, to make sure that all of our concerns were indeed heard. The amenities area, I just want to just reemphasize that that is very important as the community directly across the street from them. Other communities in our immediate area in District 2 have noticed that we have a lot of children who just don't have places to go, and they will go to the nearest neighborhood that has an amenities area. This becomes a security issue, as well as other issues, are propping up during the summertime with unsupervised children, as you can imagine. So we do want to make sure that they're able to build this amenities area, particularly a basketball court, which in our community is something that's steadily being removed from new developments. So the fence was a requirement. It is something that we've asked for. I do support the subdivision. I do support them coming to the neighborhood, but I just want to make sure that the council knows that the recommendations came directly from us. I'm one of those people who helped make those recommendations, and with that approval, we would encourage them to come to our neighborhood and join City of South Fulton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody against? What do they have left? What did the, what did the, what we have left?
Ten minutes.
I know that. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bruce Williams. I reside at 4620 Jones Road. I'm also asking for approval, well, I'm asking for approval from the Planning Commission because at some point, there was a difference between the Planning Commission and staff because staff gave different objectives rather than that of the Planning Commission. Also want to add that the developer has worked in very good faith with the community. This is the sixth time that we had a meeting, which is kind of odd because we had agreement after the first meeting. So to come back this many times with an agreement is kind of odd. But I think I would like to concur. One of the things that we were concerned about is the lack of recreation when we're building these subdivisions. When we first started out with this, we needed 70 housed homes in order to have any type of recreational facility, pools, et cetera. But we're now learning, and this is all in hindsight, that any of our developments should be considered for recreation, some type of recreation. We cannot afford to have anything built in our city that does not have recreation for our, for our children. So we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and say, "It doesn't make any difference how large it is." If you're gonna have any type of subdivision for homes here, you're going to have to have something for our children to do. So this is something that we all have to go back and rethink. But in the interim, I'm asking for approval based upon what not staff has, but for, but what the Planning Commission has. Thank you for your time.
Anybody against? He was in the middle of the road. I got a question. Where's your, where's this basketball court?
On this drawing, and this is just a zoom, a blown-up version of the amenity area that is in the site plan that y'all have, and it's been colored. The basketball court is this, is the green square here.
Where the houses at?
Houses would be across the street. This would be a residential lot right here, and then this, this street.
A residential lot?
Sir?
That would be a residential lot there?
Yes, sir. Like I said, the amenity area is in a corner, so you've got a street here and a street here.
So let me tell you what you're gonna develop. That's what we have called an attractive nuisance. That sets apart from where the houses are. Houses are. Anybody who wanted to can go there and play basketball. And usually, that's what happens. We create these attractive nuisances where people come from everywhere to play basketball, get in fights, and all these kinds. I think that's why they was asking you to put the fence up, so you can lock it. That's probably why they want you to put the fence up. I've never seen an amenity of a basketball court that far away from where the residents are, and you got across the street?
No, sir. So the entire subdivision is 62 lots. Where this amenity area is located is in the middle of those 62 lots.
Okay, so that's not what you're saying. So you're saying the amenity is all around? Where is it? Where is the amenity on that?
Sure, I'll just come over here.
All right, go ahead.
This is Stubbs Road.
Yeah.
It's the highway.
Yeah.
This is our new 62 houses. The amenity area is right here in the middle.
Okay.
These are private streets.
Is it gay? No, it's not gay here.
It's in the front of the subdivision? Would that be considered the front of the subdivision?
This is the point of access right here. And so we've got houses that would be facing private street, across the house, make this private street. There is a 50-foot buffer around the entire development along both of the Stubbs Road and the highway. That's the kind of stuff that will be controlled.
The other, the other thing I, that gets me is that there's no traffic calming on those streets.
What the site plan shows, you would add is a D cell lane for right turning traffic, a D cell lane on this side. Thank you, sorry. A right D cell lane would be added to this side for right turning traffic.
I'm talking about the internal streets. You got a lot of current, but you have nothing, you don't have any traffic calming device to slow the traffic down. And there's one way. Is there one way in and one way out?
There's one full access point. There's also an emergency access on this side. But the full access, people who live there...
An emergency access, that mean it's got a fence, you just tear it down when you come in?
For fire trucks, it's got to, emergency vehicles have to be able to have a second way to get in and out, but it's not an access point for residential traffic.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question.
Mr. Colley, I see I have you in here. Would you?
Yeah, I'm in here, but I'm gonna yield because I think...
Okay, go ahead.
So I would like for the planning staff to at least come up and speak to this concurrent variance and the reason for denial and versus what's happening with what the Planning Commission is recommending, just so we can all be clear as far as what the recommendation is and why you're recommending that.
Certainly. I think in regard to the concurrent variance, I mentioned briefly at the Planning Commission hearing, when these issues came out about needing a reduction into the, to the setback in the landscape requirements, the Planning Commission approved that as a condition. It's not clear in the ordinance that that's something that can be approved as a condition. The CUP does allow for you to set the minimum dimensional requirements of the lots. It does allow you to do the setbacks for the lots and things like that. So we brought forward this idea of, we brought forward the concurrent variance just to make sure that mayor and council could act on the Planning Commission recommendation to reduce that if they so chose. Now, the record, the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting show that this, this question of a hardship wasn't fully vetted at the time. The applicant presented their need for the reduction as the potential elimination of one to two lots. Upon review of the staff report, the applicant has decided to come forward and share more information with you tonight about the hardship. I think that the whole thing that we wanted to convey to you, because the Planning Commission did recommend approval with those conditions, is we just wanted to make sure that we covered our bases so that mayor and council could take whatever action that they deemed appropriate at that time.
So staff hasn't necessarily had the opportunity to really vet out the process, the financial hardship, or is that what you're saying?
Whether, whether or not there would be a financial hardship?
Yes.
I think we would probably have to take the applicant and his word about the loss of lots. I don't...
Okay. So in regards to this current variance, they have to have this variance in order to do the amenity for the playground? Is that what we're also saying? Because I understood that that was in the conditions.
The applicant does feel that they need to reduce the setbacks and the buffers to be able to build the amenity area. As they said, this was not part of the original application. Our public participation requirements require that between the time they submit the application and the time it goes to hearing, that they work with the adjacent property owners. I think they've made a good faith effort to work with the adjacent property owners and to include what the property owners wanted to see. We wanted to set up a process here tonight so that if mayor and council chose to move forward with what the Planning Commission had recommended, that we covered our bases in that regard. I think in regard to whether or not it meets the criteria for a variance, the applicant has tried to present information here tonight that there are extraordinary situations with the property that he feels does meet the criteria for the variance.
Just to refresh my memory, what is the price point for these homes?
Price point is gonna be a range at this point. We're looking at, in the threes, starting, so the houses, the smaller houses will be about 3,000 square feet. The larger houses that are programmed are near 5,000 square feet, so obviously there's gonna be a range in prices as well.
I'm sorry. This is West Stubbs, Z-19-006?
Yes.
Oh, I could, okay, I see the minimum, okay, the minimum is 1,800. I just saw this minimum, so you said 3,000?
One of the conditions reads that the minimum house size is 1,800 square feet. I'm not sure where that number came from. The plan that we've got is to build houses that on the small end are around 3,000 square feet.
Starting at 300s. All right, thanks.
I would like for you to do one thing for me, I mean, for the rest of them, too, and I've asked this last time. It's hard for me to tell what I'm voting on when I just see lines on a piece of paper. And I've asked for elevations.
Okay.
I want to see what this house looks like. You know, and that's what we've been failing to do, is that we see these lines, that's all it is. We don't know what the house looks like or whatever thing. And we need to change that. I mean, not just on this one, but on all of them.
Okay.
So we can get a feel of what's going on. I have some concerns. Our concern is about that auto bond you creating on that street.
Agreed.
All right. I have some concern about the one-way in and one-way out. And Ms. Reed knows, that's my thing. I don't like that. Even if you got an emergency, emergency exit, I still don't like that. So those would be, those would be my concerns, and whatever. I got a letter where staff said one thing when it came back to, when it comes here, it's different from what they agreed upon. And if you're gonna meet with communities and you're gonna agree upon it, then it needs to say the same thing when we get here. Lastly, Mr. Manager, what I want to do in the future when we have these agreements, and I don't deal with agreements that have to do with money, all right? But we having these agreements that's coming in for these communities, I want to have those agreements spread upon the minutes.
Okay.
So that any time someone wants to come look at it, they can.
Understood. I know Mayor, Ms. Reed is gonna chime in on this, but I think we want to kind of temper that exp...
that expectation regarding the elevations, because when, at this point, most times, you will receive the site plan, but you may not already have your builder, which is why they wouldn't always have the elevations. I'll let them kinda-
So, at this point, you have a developer, and then you later have a builder. Those are two separate components. So, sometimes you may have a developer who's going to lay out the actual site plan, but then you'll later have a builder who have his design, so you're not going to always have the builder at this point.
Well, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take what you say as being correct, but in my 17 years of zoning, I have seen elevations at this time.
Again, sometimes you will have the builder at this time, and sometimes you won't, so it just depends on the situation.
Well, you have a builder here, Century, is Century, right?
So, Mayor, I think we're-
Who's the, excuse me, who's the builder?
The builder is the applicant in this case, Curly Family Homes.
So, why can't I see elevation?
Same case by case, it won't always be.
Yeah, I think I'm just making an observation. You said every time these come forward, you wanna see elevations. I think for this one, that's a one-off, but I think there're gonna be others. I just wanted to make sure that I-
I'm gonna go along with you on this, on others, right now, but this one, because he is the developer, he is the developer, we should've had some elevation.
I just wanna make sure that we respond to your request.
I understand.
But just to give you the clarity, what we'll make sure to do is just to include a section that just says elevations as well as the site plan, and if it's not at the point for elevation, staff will note that. So, I just wanted to make sure, because you said-
So, I wanna go ahead and make a motion to, I really-
Let me recognize you first. Okay. Mayor, please, go ahead.
You recognize us there?
I recognize you.
Okay. I still feel a little un readiness in regards to this. So, if we can hold it for next meeting, I don't wanna deny it, because they have been working very hard with the community. I still think there's some staff vetting that needs to happen, and just trying to get this to where everybody is all on the same page. So, I'm gonna make a motion to hold it, and we can bring it forth, I guess, at the next meeting.
Property moved to second. In the discussion, hearing now, all those in favor of the hold. The motion to hold passed.
Thank you.
Next is item, public hearing for M19-007, seeking a modification for a condition requiring a 70-feet lot width at a building line on five lots.
All right. In regard to this application, the staff is requesting that this be deferred to the next meeting. There was turnover on behalf of the owner, and we are unclear that-
What happened with owner?
The owner had some turnover in staff, and we don't feel that the signage was properly placed within the time limits of the zoning procedures law. So, in abundance of caution, we are asking that it be deferred to the next meeting.
That's a good reason.
I'd like to make a motion to-
Go ahead, you.
I am so out of order tonight, I apologize. I'd like to go ahead and accept the staff's recommendation to defer.
Second. Property moved to second, in discussion?
I have discussion.
Willis?
What are they doing? What are they doing here? What are they requesting? Y'all often forget that Councilwoman McGomes and I share a lot of the same areas. Half of that Thaksin Road is District 3. So, I just wanna get a full understanding of what's going on.
Okay. In regard to this application, you can see on the site plan that there are several, I guess it's okay for me to, okay. There are several lots that they're requesting a reduction in the lot width to make them buildable. The lots are currently vacant at this time. The reason for the deferral, as I said, is the signposting, we don't think happened in the timeline that it should've happened, and so in abundance of caution, we wanna make sure there's all due notice given to the community of the request.
So, it's all happening inside the subdivision?
It's all inside the subdivision.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, council?
No, I don't, oh.
Oh, we got a phone.
No.
I'll hold it.
All right, give me a mic. Let's go, please. Votes to hold?
Defer.
What was it?
To vote is to defer.
I'm sorry, votes to defer.
And the next zoning meeting is the second meeting in February, which is February the 8th, February 25th.
That's satisfactory to you?
That's the first?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Did you all get a vote?
Yes. Next is public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed 30 minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Shall observe all rules of decorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenities shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. As I call your name, please form a line in front of the podium. Alvin Reynolds, Jewel Johnson, Pamela Harris, Joyce Jones.
Greetings once again, mayor and council.
Can you talk into my ear? Thank you.
Greetings once again, mayor and council. I had the liberty to read over the zoning ordinance rewrite, and one thing struck me was that how different things are in each area. Now, districts 1 through 4, it laid out this peaceful, sovereign picture of waterfalls and water parks and just a pleasantry. And then you come down to the old national side, I didn't feel the same. And as a matter of fact, one thing that caught my eye was that we want to have development and remove the variances. I didn't think that was fair. So, I just wanted to point that out to each of you. If you go back and look at it, that we should not be allowing any development to come in without having variance hearings put in place. Now, I don't know if that was an oversight, but that's what I read. So, that's what I wanna say.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jewel Johnson, and I live in District 1. I'm here this evening to share with you, I hope, some very good news. I wanna talk to you all about the citizen perspective of the court case that we had on yesterday. I had sent everybody a letter, but I just wanted to say, I know that the attorney probably have updated you all on what has happened. If not, I'm just gonna give you my perspective after being there. I just wanted to let you know that I was extremely proud that we had the representation that we did for the court case on yesterday, the Lot Lomond case. And we will begin the results on Friday. I was very, very impressed with Ms., our attorney, who was there and was very professional, and she was prepared. She was able to lay out everything based on every case. She was there to handle every objection. I was extremely, extremely proud, and I wanted to share that with you all and to share that with her, because when we made the change and Fincher and Walker became our attorney, I was very upset. And I may have even been a little bit brash, brash with her, or harsh, I've changed the word. And I just want to apologize. This lady is a true professional. This was my first time being able to see her work outside of the city, and she knows her job, she is very professional, and I am looking for nothing but the best from her. And I wanna say thank you very much for being there in support of us, and I also wanna thank Tony Phillips, who was also there to support us, and he stayed through the entire trial. So, right now, we are just waiting, and I just wanna close by saying, don't forget the tax dollars that we're gonna lose if we goes back to unincorporated Fulton County. That's a door opener for Atlanta.
Thank you, Jewel.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, council, and citizens. As you all may or may not know-
Say your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Pamela Harris. I live in District 1. And as many of you may know, a medical sterilization company in Fulton County recently had to pay the state a $51,000 fine after missing its deadline to install filters to reduce emissions of ethylene oxide, which is a cancer-causing gas. Sterilization Services of Georgia is located at 6005 Boat Rock Road, Atlanta 30331. Sterilization of Georgia has been violating the State Air Quality Act because it hadn't installed new pollution controls meant to reduce emissions of ethylene oxide, according to January 20 letter from the Georgia State Environmental Protection Division. Sterilization Services of Atlanta, Georgia, is located approximately 3.3 miles from A. Philip Randolph Elementary School, 3.5 miles from Sandtown Middle School, 4.3 miles from the City of South Fulton City Hall, 4.2 miles from Regency Hills, 4.4 miles from Montclair Estates, Versailles, and Grandview. Finally, the EPA has discovered that ethylene oxide far more dangerous, is far more dangerous than scientists have understood before. The agency has moved it from the list of chemicals that probably could cause cancer to a list of those that definitely cause cancer. The EPA also updated a key risk number for the chemical to reflect that it is 30 times more likely to cause certain cancers than scientists have known. I'm concerned about the citizens that live, it's actually within 5-mile radius of most of where we all live, and our children go to school.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
All right.
My name is Joyce Jones. I'm in District 1, and I would like to say, good evening, Mayor Edwards and city council. And I would just like to say, I would like to know why are we paying an additional $1 million for Wolf Creek Apple Theater when we have already paid for the theater already? And I would just like to know why we having to pay for it again? And that's my comment.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Next, we have Ivory Denson, Betty Bartos, Beverly Young, Joyce Almster.
Come on, come on.
Good evening. I'm Ivory M. Denson, and there are a couple things I would like to bring your attention. One of those is the unavailability of personnel when I call the city council, not the city's office. I called one time for the city clerk, the clerk was not there. Today, I called twice, and whoever's supposed to be the person that was handling calls was not in. This is not the level of service that I expect. People on the payroll, they need to be at work, or they need to be covered, because when we call, I wanna get a person, and this is not the first time that has happened. Tonight, when I arrived here, I had the parking overflow area, the police had the parking lot there filled up with the most, quite a bit of them, and the lights, those blue lights are blinding. I almost fell. Now, safety should be a concern of this city. I don't know if y'all are indemnified and can't be sued or whatever, but maybe we're taking a chance that we should not be taking. The other thing is, I'm concerned about how we are spending monies. I see where we keep on increasing fees to residents. I see where there's a proposed increase in the use of the Merk Road landfill, and also, we are putting celebrations for holidays like the June 10th. I think we should look more carefully at how we are spending money. We can celebrate without necessarily declaring something a holiday. People are spending less because our taxes are not competitive, say, with Cobb County. And those of us who have transportation will be going to places where we don't have to pay as much here, so please look at ways to kinda reduce what we are paying instead of separating us from our monies. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Betty Bartos, District 4, Short Road, Bishop Road, dump fire. Bullock, the perpetrator, was fined by the state for a billion one, and the state offered up $500,000 to extinguish this fire early last year. It's not out, it never was. We went over that last session, and I showed you the pictures y'all should have right now with you, corrective action plan. We just spent $15,000 of city taxpayer dollars to repeat the testing EPD did last year, as they refused to follow up and test again. Ben Brash, AGC reporter, said the EPD estimated 450,000 cubic yards of construction and other debris were on the property, filling around 45,000 dump truck fulls. Y'all have there the copies. Bullock submitted last March, and the EPD agreed and gave him first 120 days to get it done, then gave him 16 months. Bullock states, "We will remove a minimum of 12,000 cubic yards or 1,200 truckloads per quarter." That would add up to 60,000 total, a far cry from the 450,000 the EPD estimated. That means 3,600 truckloads of material were to be removed by now. Our neighborhood diligently monitors that site and takes pictures, so we know it didn't happen. We saw 26 truckloads of concrete material move to the site next door for their parking lot. No mulch, no dirt. The debris piles look the same as last year because around 2% of the work has been done. We monitor, tested, and paid for that testing, but we can't make the correction plan happen. The state has to, since EPD won't monitor or communicate it. We need the state to collect that million dollars, and if they can't, they need to seize that property, then use that $500,000 they promised us, along with our $150,000 that we were getting, and clean it up. We need help, we need your help. Get after the state, get him off that property and clean it up.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, I mean, good night, really. My name is Beverly Young. I'm sorry, it's been that long, but my name is Beverly Young, I live in District 7. I'm gonna start with God bless Emma Dornell Soul. She promised the slot money to resurface front of Ridge. I live on Cedarhurst Trail, little small potholes is coming up, and they are patching them holes, and they are coming back on the park. So, I live on Cedarhurst Trail. Please send G dot or whoever, 'cause our subdivision roads are coming loose with potholes, and the city will be paying for my tires.
My name is Joyce Almster, and I'm president of Heritage Park Subdivision and the O-NARU, which stands for Old National Area Residents United. Thank you, Mayor Edwards and the city council members. We've come a long way, but we still have a lot of work to do. Congratulations, Councilman Reeves. Thank you, Chief Meadows, for your continued support in each community. You know, the Panthers have proved one thing tonight, that with love, it'll bring about a change. Lastly, the next O-NARU meeting is February the 20th. Our guest speaker is Mr. Tyrone Harps, and he's from the Census Bureau. We're gonna try to help in any way that we can to get this information out, because it is very important that every man stand and be accounted for. Lastly, I'm looking for-
Lastly, I'm looking forward to working with each of you this year. We got a lot of work to do, but we can do it if we work together.
All right. Thank you.
Charles McGillis, Khalid Farrakhan, and Roseanne Hill.
I like the name. He better represent.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Council members. Thanks for being here. My name is Charles McGillis. I'm a longtime resident of Union City, Georgia, and my complaint is I'm in the process of purchasing some land, commercial and residential land. The problem that I'm coming up with is the building permit code, the timeframe that it take to get a permit for a building. And I want to know, how can we accelerate that process in order to get that building permit? Because I'm in the process of purchasing, once again, some commercial and real estate property, and I'm trying to develop that in South Fulton County. Any help would help out a lot with this project. And I'm looking to work forward with the mayor to get this problem resolved. Thank you.
Who's next? Ms. Reed?
No.
No.
It's Farrakhan.
I was calling Shayla Reed.
Supreme Admiral Khalid Farrakhan.
I'm Supreme Admiral Khalid Farrakhan, the founding member of the 10,000 Fearless Sailing Academy, the historic 10,000 Fearless Sailing Academy, and I'm based in, I believe, your district. I'm gonna start now. In the name of Allah, the magnificent and merciful, good evening, my beloved citizens of our city of South Fulton. I am your brother, Supreme Captain Khalid Farrakhan Muhammad of the 10,000 Fearless Sailing Academy for disenfranchised youth throughout the great state of Georgia. A few weeks ago, I witnessed a sad scene, a division that struck my heart to the core inside City Hall. There were serious charges laid against the mayor and our sister councilwoman Willis on alleged wrongdoing. But I do... But do they good outweigh their alleged wrong in their labor in the city? My teacher taught me, don't concentrate on one aspect. We concentrate on the whole. What have they done to benefit the city since becoming the mayor or city woman? Go over all the successful projects the mayor and councilwomen completed under certain private that benefited the city. In other words, give our mayor and to most of us in this room, respect our elders, whether they are right or wrong, period. Got our elders in here after nine o'clock. So give the mayor the respect to complete his term in dignity. And if it is of our record at 99% success, it's not. Remember this, beloved residents of South Fulton. We all have fell short of the glory of God. We all have sinned. So Jesus said, "Let he without sin cast the first stone."
Avram, that's enough. My brother, your time is up.
Well, I was interrupted a few times with interference and...
Okay, let's give him another...
Minute. That's all I ask, dear brother mayor.
All right.
When they wanted to stone a woman for adultery, they didn't care. They all picked up their stones, readyed themselves. Then Jesus walked through the crowd and said, "Let he who sinned is cast the first stone." What about your sins? And this council, let's go to this law firm, this Caucasian law firm in Fayetteville, this benevolent law firm, seemed like we was on a divide and conquer mission with our people. It looks to me like somebody wants to be mayor and inordinately desire to seat, to outseat our mayor. And if any brother or sister here wants to be the mayor, you don't tear down one man so you can take his place. You don't do that. And as you have done unto them, it shall be done unto you. Be patient and wait your turn. That's all I'm gonna say for right now.
Thank you, my brother.
And I'm gonna respect the system. Thank you, brother mayor.
Thank you.
I'll give part two as betty soon, God willing. Thank you, beloved citizens. Let's do better with this time. Khalid, give me the total of how much you paid that law firm in Fayetteville. Also, do you know how to reach me, Councilman Khalid?
Listen, who's next?
Mr. Hill.
How y'all doing? I need a drink. My name is Roger Hill. A&amp;A Construction Electrical. I'm actually a builder, and I'm actually building, it'd be probably a total of about 10 or 15 houses in your county. The problem that I'm having is I've gotten like maybe three permits or whatever so far. It's actually taken too long to get permits in your county, and I really feel that y'all need some help over there. But that's not the reason why I'm here. The reason why I'm here is that it's taken like two or three months per house to get a permit. I went to, I got four, no, I got five houses where I need permits. And I actually went to the city about a week or so ago, and now they want me to pay all the permit fees upfront, and I don't think that's fair. Because if it's taken two or three months to get these permits, and now I gotta pay $25,000 or $30,000 upfront and still wait 30 to 60 to 90 days, I don't agree with that. That's just like, all y'all, y'all go to work, don't nobody get paid upfront first, right? For the end of the week, you go to work, do your job, then you get your check, whether it's the first of the month, every two weeks, or once a month. So with contractors, we flip our money. We need our money. We can't just tie up $25,000, $30,000 for 60 to 90 days. So I would like for City Council to do something about that. Go back to the old way. Don't go back to something new because I'm not trying to finance all the stuff they're trying to do. I mean, right is right, and then there's no other municipalities that's really doing this. I can see, you know, people charge like a couple hundred dollars for whatever process or whatever, but to pay $5,000 or $6,000 upfront, and then, like I said, I got five houses that I need permits, that's crazy.
She waiting on you.
What's that?
She's waiting on you.
She waiting on me? Shoot, I'm waiting to leave. I need a drink, shoot.
All right.
So that's it?
That's it.
So can we consider something?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mayor and Council, that ends our public comments forum area. The next item on the agenda is number five from the work session. City of South Fulton Smart Energy Solutions, City Manager.
So Mayor and Council, as Mr. Chafin and the team from Cherry Street Energy comes up, I just wanted to kind of highlight that the council has charged us with being more efficient in how we manage our budget, as well as introduce some smart city solutions. We talked about some of those at the last council meeting, and while we're not asking for an approval today, we would like to eventually move forward with Cherry Street Energy in a partnership similar to what they have in Atlanta, to where they implement solar panels onto existing buildings, cut your energy rates and energy and utility bills over time, as well as introduce workforce development solutions, putting citizens to work. And so we've vetted them pretty well. We provided the city attorney with their agreement for a review, but we wanted to provide them an opportunity to tell them a little bit about, tell you a little bit about who they are and how they can benefit the city and have worked in other municipalities similarly to introduce smart energy solutions.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yes.
City Council members, it's nice to be with some of you the first time and some of you again to speak about our business, which is a power company, which I started five years ago. I'm born and raised in Macon, Georgia, where my grandparents had a clothing store on Cherry Street. That's where we get our name. The law changed in Georgia in 2015, allowing for competitive energy markets. The territorial acts of the 1970s were amended. We became the first in the state, in my hometown, to sell power directly to customers, not being a utility. And my first pitch of my business, my background was in finance and accounting, woke up on third base in life. I just didn't think I hit a triple. My high school sweetheart's dad, who was the mayor of my hometown, said, "Michael, let me make sure I got this right. Now that the law's changed, you mean at no cost to the city of Macon, you will install solar panels, own, operate, maintain, and with time, improve them. Sell me the power at rates less expensive than I buy it from the utility, and I get to stand on the front steps of City Hall with that photo man taking my picture, telling everybody I gone green." Is that what has happened? I said, "Yes, sir, that's it." So the first power purchase agreement in the state of Georgia between a company selling power directly to a customer was between us and my hometown of Macon, Georgia. Then the City of Atlanta called, and they said, "This is possible. We can do this." And we said, "Absolutely, we can." We started fire stations, recreation centers. Last month, City Council of Atlanta voted, "Next is gonna be watershed." And so that's our business. We are a power company that owns the infrastructure of the future. The built environment of the future will incorporate renewable power in every structure that can hold it. And the reason is unit economics. We can talk about the need to transition our energy mix, but it's because solar power is a technology, it's not a fuel, and we can sell the power that we generate at competitive rates. No better data set exists than how much the sun shines, and we know exactly how much we're gonna produce and exactly the rate that we're gonna sell it to the City of South Fulton over the course of our contract. Before I go much further, I want to introduce our partner in doing this. And the other part of understanding what we do as a power company is that we're building the infrastructure of the future, and we have to build the workforce of the future to install and maintain it. And I'm very fortunate to have a partner in Mark Davis and Interurban Solar to do this. You'll flip to the second page, and I'll slide over so that you see. Mr. Davis is from South Georgia. He's spent his professional career now in Washington, DC, and he is moving back here to train the crews that we need to install our infrastructure. You'll see in the photo in your slide is our head of construction, Christian McClure, that's here, Mark Davis, and six men from the City of Atlanta that went through his training program to learn this. I think people have a vested interest in making things seem more complicated than they are. Our business is not complicated. This is an erector set with a piece of glass that sits on top. And first solar panel in the world was in Americas, Georgia. Bell Labs invented it, and we know that it works. And now we've got a partner, Interurban Solar, whose mission is to create livable wage, renewable energy jobs for local electricians, roofers, solar technicians, and engineers. By employing people at the local lever, level, Interurban Solar keeps green dollars in local communities, saves families and municipalities' monies on energy costs, improves air quality, and makes solar energy affordable and available to all residents living in urban areas. Mark Davis has done this in DC, and we want to do it here. We're starting in South Fulton next month with a training program to get interested folks in, trained how to install this infrastructure. Our first project we'd like to start with is at Welcomeall Park. The way that our contract works is that we're a power company, and at any facility that the city chooses, we'd incorporate the infrastructure and sell the power at rates that are competitive to, in this case, Georgia Power's rates. We work very closely with the utility to make sure both that we're correct about the projections of what our rate is and their rate, and also that we're sizing the system appropriately to do so. The second piece of our partnership that I want to talk about is that the price that's in here that we talk about for Welcomeall Park does not assume the right side of the partnership because it's a timing-based question. But Bill Nussie is an inventor at a Georgia Tech lab. I got a $500,000 grant, the largest grant the Department of Energy's ever given for a first solar invention made in America. There are solar panels and innovations that they've developed here, and they want to essentially donate the test panels for Welcomeall Park in your district, obviously, Councilwoman, to do that, and we would just pass those savings through. Our aspiration is to be on every facility in South Fulton. That's what we're working on in the City of Atlanta. They've got hundreds of buildings, and we're going at about two buildings a month right now. Partnerships with Mark Davis is what we need. We've got a backlog of 75 buildings, and we need crews to install this infrastructure. But to do so, we need partnerships with communities like South Fulton. We got awarded Fulton County's business as well. As y'all know, they've just redone 24 libraries, and that's where we'll start with them. But let me skip to say quickly so that you see one of our installations, the top right, the Martin Luther King Aquatic Center. Let me go here as a case study, if you can see it, for the City of Atlanta. These are recreation centers, parks. We've worked with police, now with watershed across the departments, the City of Athens, and also from an economic development perspective. I was with the mayor of Athens earlier this week, did a ribbon cutting at Terrapin Brewery, and also now working at Creature Comforts Brewery. So we think that both attracting businesses into communities, as well as the economic and fiscal sense of our competitive rates. So quickly, just to walk through what the program is or the project summary. Our contract to sell power at fixed rates is over 20 years. There is no cost to the city for the installation, for the maintenance, and ongoing improvement. That's our cost as a power company. And to us, the benefit is local jobs. We want to do this across the state, and to do so, we need to train local workers to maintain, manage these systems that we're building. And that's why having partnership in the training programs that we'd like to roll out in the community, something that we're incredibly excited about. So appreciate y'all's time in letting us come in and talk to you about what we'd like to do. But we welcome questions or can go into more detail.
I actually think this is awesome because in 2018, I don't know, Mr. Donald, if this was right upon your arrival, we talked about, and we adopted as a council, a clean energy resource resolution, and this was part of the strategy. So I don't know if I need to, you know, have you go back and take a look at it just to make sure that all of the points are being hit, but it is a clean energy resolution that we adopted as a council.
So we used that to actually find them. We were looking at, so you have a couple of items in there in your smart energy solutions. Solar is one of them, but it's basically about diversifying energy using smart technologies, et cetera, et cetera. And so our meeting request with Cherry Street was a follow-up from us reviewing the other municipalities and what they're doing. And since they had a relationship with Atlanta, at the time, they didn't have Fulton County, but they had Athens and Macon. And so I think you guys know we have a pretty good relationship with Macon, and so they referred us to them. We've looked at some other companies and organizations, but they're a no-cost model. They have the grant from Georgia Tech, who's agreed to provide those materials to us at no cost, and we've acquired now Southwest Art Center and Welcomeall Park, which are both, you know, very large facilities, to be able to test it at no cost, get the equipment at no cost, and then get their commitment to hire South Fulton residents to install. We thought it fit very well with your ordinance, as well as some other enhancements for the city.
So that's definitely excellent. And I also heard that, you know, I think Councilwoman Morales said, you know, she met you at the smart cities. So it kind of incorporates all of that, so that makes it really, and of course, the no cost is really attractive as well. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Khalid.
Hey, thank you. So I just, I have questions about the business model. So everything's free, the materials, we get all of these things free, and...
The capital investment, I should be careful in saying that you are paying for the power that you receive from the panels that we... that you receive from the panels that we provide. So there's no free lunch. It's just...
Right. So you install all the stuff, and then instead of buying our power from Georgia Power, we buy it from you?
Yes, sir. For 30% of that facility's consumption. So our intent is not to build the church for Easter. We want to make it for the load profile, the load shape of that facility. You'll see if, looking across our portfolio, I'd love to take you to some of our sites. We want to come back and incorporate battery storage when it's cost efficient. We just have not been very successful selling. Many folks saying, "We will increase your bills." So our view is that we have to install systems at rates essentially that allow us to do so, and that with time, we can incorporate more to capture more. We have no interest in creating more energy than is consumed in that facility because backfeeding it to the grid is not an efficient installation. Some of what folks talk about is that everybody else in the business of doing what we do is in the business of selling panels. They do want to build the church for Easter. They want to cover a rooftop and sell as many panels as they can and leave. We only get paid for the power we produce that the city of South Fulton purchases. If it goes back to the grid, it's below our creation cost. So we want to make sure that we're sizing these correctly, that it's the best value for the city.
So my second question is, is this only available for municipal buildings? Is it not available for private?
No, sir. It's absolutely available for private. We hope that your civic leadership will cause others to see that that possibility is there. And some of the best reasons that we see, starting at recreation centers and community centers, in addition to establishing resiliency hubs, so places where we can incorporate stores that people could charge phones if there were power outages, is that like at the C.T. Martin Recreation Center on MLK, you know, all those kids out front playing on the playground, they look up at the rooftop of that standing scene roof, and they see the built environment of the future has solar panels on it. They know how it works. We educate behind it and think that it's helpful for that. And then we hope with as many rooftops, frankly, as you've got in South Fulton, that would be wonderfully suited for that. It's great from an economic development perspective because we'd love to build that infrastructure out, and we'd love to build it out with labor that's in this market that then is going to maintain it and operate it for us for the next 20 years.
So educate me because I have been talking to some developers who were interested in putting panels on an apartment building.
Yes.
And they were telling me that you had to get some sort of clearance from Georgia Power to connect to the grid. And it sounds like you solved that problem. Could you explain how that happens?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Of course. That's called an interconnection agreement. We established, and as far as I know, are the only ones to have that negotiated agreement with Georgia Power for what technically we call a behind-the-meter interconnection. They do an impact assessment to say that we've built it appropriately. We're not going to send electrons unsafely back onto their distribution or transmission. But that's a negotiation that we've been through with them and have done and worked closely with them. We want to be their partner.
And is that like a, is that a permanent agreement, or every time you build out a building, you have to...
At each interconnection point, yes, sir, because it's bespoke to the design of that facility.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Willis.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm excited about this news. Mr. Donald, what's the timeline and what will it take to move forward with this?
So this one, we have been working on so long that we're hoping that the next council meeting, we want it to, one, let you talk to them, ask as many questions as possible. And I mean, they're very responsive, so you'll all get their information. I think it's included in the agreement, right? And so it is included in your packet already. And so we plan to simply bring it back to you after our city attorney reviews it with purchasing because we have options to piggyback off of agreements with Fulton and Atlanta. I think those are the ones that are most favorable and have the longest life. And so once the city attorney and purchasing officer get to review which deal is better, we would put it back on the agenda for approval. But we wanted to allow you to talk to them first. I know many of you are already familiar, but get some of your questions answered, and it's our new 2020 way of doing things.
What buildings does the solar panels, do you have your equipment in in Fulton County? I know you said Atlanta, C.T. Martin Center, but...
Yes, ma'am. So we're on 17 buildings in the city of Atlanta right now. For Fulton County, we have not installed any. We anticipate that one being voted on, I think in their next session on the 5th. But there are six libraries initially that we looked at, and each of their six districts is where we would like to start. They just redid the 23. And then there, I think Camp Creek Watershed is what we looked at as the next phase.
And so I'm planning at my next town hall to have Public Works and Code Enforcement. Would it be okay for him to come out, or if they're available? It won't be until next quarter, so they can let the community know about this. And I will also, if you can, like a write-up, so that I can put it in my newsletter. I think this is great news, and this is stuff we want to hear about in the media.
I mean, he got to answer that.
Yes, ma'am. I would welcome it. I mean, any way we can be supportive to tell it because we'd love to do those, and we'd love to champion Mark Davis and some of the workforce training as well, getting folks into those classes.
Okay. Thank you.
It would be great. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm looking at the agreement, and it says, this is the master solar energy procurement agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
And in it, on page 19 of it, is the energy-based payment.
Yes, ma'am.
So you move on through it, and here's another example of an excellent project that's going to cost some money. It's not identified, not even with an estimate in the agreement. And then my next question is, where is it budgeted? If it's coming back in two more weeks or a month or wherever, where is it budgeted? Because it has monthly payments in here. So it's got to come out. Just let me finish. It's got...
Mike, I love to answer this.
It has to come out of a budget line somewhere. And in addition to that, on page 261, it says that the facility's sites are Sandtown Park and Welcome All Park. So there are two sites, not one. So...
Would you like me to answer?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, well, I'm going to say no. Because I want to know about the... No, I would like for... Is Mr. Malazi still here?
He is.
I would like for him to tell me where is the money for this.
I think your city manager is so excited to answer these questions for you because, again, we've been working on this for so long.
Is it in the budget? Answer that.
Yes, ma'am. It's in the utility line item. And so the model that he described for you is Georgia Power doesn't go away. So let's say you pay Georgia Power $1,000 a month. 30% of that bill you actually pay to the solar company instead of Georgia Power. But because solar is cheaper, over time, your costs actually decrease. That's the model, and that's the breakdown that they provided. Second of all, remember, that's just a mock agreement for you to get some understanding. We're actually going to piggyback off of the other contracts that are available, and our purchasing and city attorney will be, I mean, I'm thorough on this. I'm prepared for this one now. So our purchasing and our city attorney will actually be reviewing those and finalizing the terms. But the whole purpose is to reduce costs. So thanks to finance, over the last three years, we have projections and a baseline of what we pay in utility bills across all of our facilities. And so in the last six months, and it's probably been a little longer than that, we've done assessments of all of the buildings that we own, as well as Southwest Art Center, which we recently acquired prior to acquiring it. So not only do we have our utility bills and the basis that we've had over the last three years, we also have an assessment of what it would cost for them to install, which is their cost, how much our utility bills will be reduced over time, and how we'll lay out the 30%. So not only are we prepared, it is in budget, it will not require an amendment, and we're ready to roll it out whenever council approves.
So when it comes back, when the agreement comes back, it will have dollars in it of what it will cost?
It will have the percentage of your bill. Well, yeah. I mean, because it's going to be based on what we do, but it's also based off of our past usage. And so literally, they aren't necessarily charging us. It is, you have your Georgia Power bill. 30% of the usage is actually powered by solar. Based off of that, which the rates are less than Georgia Power's rate.
I understand that.
Okay. Got it. So yes, it's within budget. So if you pay $1,000 a month now, which of course we pay more than that, you pay $1,000 a month now, you will likely, over your first six to nine months, still pay about $1,000. You would just be sending a portion of that 30% to the power company. But after, you'll see those costs reduce over time at, on average, what is it, Michael, about 10%? So you'll continue to see that year over year.
That's exactly right. City Councilwoman, if I...
So I'm just going to read this.
Yes, ma'am.
It says, "The purchaser shall pay the seller a monthly energy-based payment in accordance with Appendix A," which...
That's the contract energy price.
Which, so it's in there.
Yes, ma'am.
For solar delivered. So there needs to be some dollars in this agreement when it comes back, somewhere.
Yes, ma'am.
Some estimate. Because we're not just going to blankly sign some...
It won't be. That's just the sample. So the contract price that we've put in the proposal is 9.5 cents per kilowatt hour. The sun shines in South Fulton 1,450 hours. When the sun shines 1,450 hours on 150 kilowatts, it's going to generate 220,000 kilowatt hours. 9.5 cents times 220,000 kilowatt hours is going to be roughly $20,000 of expense to the city that comes to us. Welcome All Parks bills last year were roughly $66,000. So that's the 30% that we'll take. And our rates are fixed with a 1.5% escalation over that 20-year contract. The city currently has a perpetual contract with the utility and no ability to negotiate. Historically, that rate's increased at 4.5%. So our estimates, we think frankly, and we don't talk about savings, we talk about predictability because we know exactly what it should be. And we have every interest in being as transparent as we can in those numbers.
So my last question is, how were these two sites chosen?
So the actual partners did a variety of assessments throughout the city. I know we did Sandtown, Welcome All, Southwest Art Center, Clifton Day. I mean, there were about 13 of our facilities. I know one that they were very interested in was City Hall, but that is a leased building, not an owned building. And so what we wanted to do was get the benefit off of our owned infrastructure. Some of the facilities that we would have liked to use, you know, we've got some dilapidated infrastructure, and the roofs just weren't appropriate. And so we actually let the subject matter experts do the assessments and make recommendations on who goes first, and then they have a plan to expand if everything cuts the mustard as we expect.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Weller, please. Yes, I'm very excited about this here news, and that's how I'm pretty familiar with this type of project. What I want to talk about are the green jobs that come along with this.
That's right.
Okay. So how long does it take to train an individual on how to put and implement your product?
Six weeks is the standard training course, and I'm happy to defer if Mark wants to talk about it more. But it's a six-week training program predominantly in the two main components, racking and glass, the solar panel. Solar panel weighs 70 pounds. A racking system is a load balisted system. Kid from Macon, Georgia, that means PVC with cinder blocks on top of it. So you piece those together. And there's the training for all of the safety and the rest, but putting that together is what we need help with. It's about a six-week program. And there are a lot of different jobs along the way. People get on a rooftop and decide, "I don't like being on a rooftop." So there are a lot of different elements that we can go in and see.
Correct. And the average earnings for an individual trained in this area?
Yes, sir. So our rates typically bill out at about 25 for starting up to 35 for those roles. And from a subcontractor perspective, we usually pay through at about $55 an hour, but I think the laborers are getting 25 to 35.
Two more multiplier. Also, are y'all open and willing to hire and bring on people with these green jobs, persons with alternative backgrounds?
Absolutely. And if I can just say explicitly, some of what the work that we want to do together and its constraints that we have today, alternative backgrounds and reentry programs are some of the best opportunities because these are such good jobs. But a lot of our stuff's from a, what's permissible from a contracting perspective is, do city buildings allow us to bring those employees into those places?
And veterans.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I'm excited. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have two more speakers, one, Mr. Kalid, and we'll end the conversation with Ms. Rose.
Hi. Thanks. To piggyback off that, I do just want to make you aware, we do have this South Fulton Career Academy. So if this is something that we're going to go for with, one of the five career academies is construction. So I think that, you know, they're...
Please, yes, sir. We'd love to use the resources that are in place today.
The second thing is, I hear that there's a 20-year contract. So my question is, we put the, we put the, and I don't know if Mr. Phillips is still in here, but we put these on the roofs of, say, Welcome All Park. I don't know that that roof has a 20-year life left in it. What happens if we need to replace a roof or the building is just no good?
It's absolutely the right question, and that's what we're focused on in some of what city manager was talking about. So we've done the roof inspections thus far at our, I mean, it's not our cost. But so we've paid for Welcome All Park's roof inspection. City manager has the report to confirm that that's okay. Our goal as a power company is to work collaboratively with you as re-roofing's happen. It's not really in our interest to get on a roof if you say, "Hey, we're going to redo that in two years." We want to make sure it's in your cadence for that maintenance.
If for any reason...
That's our cost. So if, because it's going to happen, right? It's already happened in Atlanta at Roosevelt Fan. They said, "Hey, we're going to re-roof."
He's asking you something different, Michael. So what you're saying is, so all of the roofs that they looked at, I think the ones that they selected had at least a five to eight-year life cycle. And so if it got to the end of that roof's usable life, then we would coordinate a shift of the panels so that we can do any repairs, et cetera, et cetera. But it's basically going to align with our capital plan. So if it was a...
And so we would pay to move the panels?
No, sir. No, no, no.
The roof, so if the roof needed to be repaired, that is on us. But then we would coordinate with them to, you know, align the panels and say, let's say it was Welcome All, and there was a hole in the roof or something that had to be repaired in four years, or we knew it had to be repaired. Well, we're going to, when we do our capital outlay for the roof, we're going to coordinate with them to adjust the panels so that we can do those repairs. But none of the roofs that have been inspected and projected for this project have a short usable life.
So I just want to be clear, because coordinate is a vague word. We're going to pay to fix the roof.
Correct.
Who pays to move the panels and then move them back?
That is the... Yeah. Sorry about that. I thought I was clear.
And that's explicit contractual too, and we should go through it. But those are on us. Coordinated just because we asked that you call us and not move them yourself.
Awesome.
Some of the residents have concerns about security as relative to the panels. Have you all had any problems with any other municipality with people stealing the panels?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And this is more so for the city manager. Thank you. Like I said, I'm excited about this, and I look forward to having you out to the community and letting them know about the exciting news. But Mr. Donald, I think that if costs and contracts are important, then we need to be consistent in that. Because there are some things that have not been budgeted for that this council approved, and we didn't have any contract for it, and we didn't know how much it was going to cost. But some of us were all, was in favor to make sure that certain things were paid for that was important to them. And in this instance, this is going to save the city money on utility costs. And so I think that we should be consistent if we want to worry about what's budgeted and what's not budgeted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Next item, back on the work session agenda, was council discussion of rescheduling the March meetings, the March 10th meeting, because Legal NLC is March 8th through the 11th, 2020. And then March 24th meeting is the primary election, which is a city holiday, so there's no discussion on that one. But the March 10th meeting.
Okay. Any suggestions on the new date for the March 10th meeting?
I just have a few.
Any suggestions?
Any suggestions?
I moved that we cancel. I moved that we cancel, this is because of the...
Microphone, please.
Actually, I moved that we cancel March tenth council meeting.
Is there a second?
Due to the National League of Cities Conference that most of us will be attending.
Yeah, sir.
Is there a second?
Move to what date?
Second.
No, move to tenth meeting.
No, I moved that we cancel March tenth, and Ms. Gump's second.
Poppy moved the second discussion.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna yield to our City Manager in a second, but first, I just wanna say we just got this very aggressive schedule for rezoning, and I just don't think that we can afford, our current zoning ordinance is like a thousand pages. I don't know how long this new one will be, but I don't think we can afford to miss any meetings and still make that zoning schedule. And then secondly, I wanna say that the twenty-fourth is not a holiday, we just made it. So I just wanna, I want that to be clear, people still have to come to work. Didn't add another holiday, we just can't have a meeting on that day.
Yes, and Councilmember Khalid, I think, so I agree with you, we do need the meetings during that month. But what you'll see in the City Manager's report is, one of the adjustments that we wanna make this year is to move the budget process up quite a bit, meaning starting in February. And so in March, we would then come back before the council and kinda start that process. We usually do so with the retreat, with the annual retreat, and we had not identified a time for that. So as you consider how you wanna move this meeting around and align it with your calendars, I would likely say if you counsel it, you could direct the clerk's office to poll you for the annual retreat, and we kinda kill two birds with one stone. Where you may move it to that weekend, or another time in March that you deem appropriate so that we can address the budget kickoff and all of these other activities during your annual strategic retreat.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and that discussion?
Can we?
Get in the queue. You're in the queue, Mr. Dave? Go ahead. Okay. No, somebody down here. You go ahead.
Previous question.
I just wanted to ask if we did cancel that meeting, given that we handle our zoning cases. In the second meeting, would we still handle those zoning cases? Because we just rescheduled, at least my area zoning for the month of March.
February.
February.
February. You just canceled it.
No, we going back two months. So we're going to March, as I said, so I'm just concerned. So is that the projection in the motion? Are we gonna cancel that council meeting period, and we'll have our second meeting of the month dealing with zoning as we return, and we just won't try to make that one up?
I know the motion was to cancel the period.
May I interject? March twenty-fourth is a primary election, and the motion, we, you approved that we would not have any meetings on primary election days.
Right. So that mean we will, we won't have any that entire month?
Correct.
Okay.
So you just need to, or reschedule it.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. The first thing I asked when it was called was, somebody give me a date.
Well, I can't.
And then the motion to cancel. So we can, we can vote on the motion also on the floor. If it fails, we can go back to the beginning of that.
So she withdrew her motion? I didn't withdraw, but I'm saying if y'all gonna pick a day...
Microphone, please.
Let me, let me carry the vote. If you're not gonna draw, if you're not gonna draw the motion, let's carry the vote out.
Does somebody, Mr. Mayor?
I might come make an amendment.
Does someone have a day that they prefer to have the meeting other than the tenth?
The very next Tuesday.
So can we have the meeting on March the third, the first meeting, and then March the seventeenth for the second meeting?
Wait, 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 wait.
We're not doing anything but chaining it to the first.
First of all, first of all, you gonna get rid of the motion that's on the floor.
Mayor, what I ask, if you don't mind, is that if somebody had a day that they can amend my motion, I don't have a problem with canceling it, but if somebody pick a day other than the day that we can have it, I don't have a problem with that. So someone is asking to amend the motion to add a day. It's my motion, and that's what I ask. I said, does someone have a day?
I moved to amend the motion. Girl, to what?
To March third, the first Tuesday of the month.
And the seventeenth.
Second.
Poppy moved the second discussion. Did you wanna say something, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so the week before, we would, if it was the third, we would actually have a meeting on February twenty-fifth. It takes us one week to get prepared for each council meeting because we have to submit items to the clerk on that Tuesday as a reminder to council on the process. Again, I think that in lieu of trying to navigate your schedules here in the public meeting, if you direct us to poll you and coordinate it, and you just make your will clear that you wanna have two meetings in March, or you just wanna have...
We just recommended March seventeenth to guarantee this week.
I think the motion was for, the amendment was for the third. And what I'm pointing out is, you have a meeting on the twenty-fifth.
She said the third and seventeen.
For the third specifically, on the third, if you have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, that means the week before, we have submitted all of the information.
But Mr. Donald, we're...
Let him finish, you know, that's the problem. Let him finish what he has, and I'll recognize.
Excuse me, sir.
I'll recognize. Go ahead, finish your camera.
I just think the staff portion, we would not have anything that we could produce to get to you for the meeting to handle city business because we would have just delivered it to you the week before. I think that's what I'm trying to express. If you have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, we don't have any time to produce documents or deliver anything to the clerk's office for at least the staff-related actions.
So...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Khalid was next, he had his hand up. I've asked people to get into the queue, nobody has.
We can't get into the queue.
Can't get into it?
I can.
I saw Mr. Khalid, and then I'll give Ms. Gump's. Go ahead.
So the National League of Cities, you all are back on the twelfth or thirteenth, or?
Hmm.
Does someone have the date for the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference? It's March eighth through March eleventh? You've just said that you are going to move up our mid-year budget amendment and our budget process meeting. Would you be ready to do that, that week of March?
I believe so, but remember, it's not the budget amendment, it is the...
Budget retreat.
Yes, your retreat.
So I wonder if instead of having a meeting on March tenth, if we could just agree now to have the budget retreat March thirteenth and fourteenth? I'm sorry, March twelfth and thirteenth?
We just get feedback from them on what they want. So for us, we could, it's whether they can...
I mean, I'm just...
They didn't answer the question.
I'm just polling. First of all, I wanna know if the twelfth and thirteenth works for the budget schedule that you all are creating for the staff? And then if it does, then we have to see if that even works for the council, cause it might not.
Understood. So I think we could definitely provide it, cause that's when we're gonna get feedback from you as the council. So absolutely, pending the clerk being able to make reservations. But staff preparedness, yes.
Okay, let me, let me get him in, or, no, it was Ms. Gump, then you.
Well, if we're speaking about doing it all, so we're gonna go to National League of Cities and then turn around and go and still be away, that means that we're gonna be out of market. And for those who work, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to be a part of any of that. If we're gonna be in National League of Cities, then two days later, we're gonna have to be out of market to, so it just doesn't work, especially for those who have families. But either way, that's not the issue. I'm just saying, for what we had proposed before is the third and the seventeenth. Now, you're saying it's gonna take you a week to at least prepare for the items for the third? But we're, we're already, I mean, we're given a month of preparedness right now, so I don't understand.
Because you have two meetings in February. So the way, so the way it works is, after this meeting, we start preparing for the next meeting. We have a week to do so. After that meeting, we have a week to prepare. If we leave the twenty-fifth, I mean, I guess you could schedule the meeting, I'm just not sure what items we would be able to bring before you.
Can we just...
All right, let me, let me, let me.
Which would be fine, just may I have a shot?
Are you patient?
So that, we would have the same problem if we did the seventeenth and the thirty-first, correct? Cause the thirty-first...
No.
We have a meeting on the...
Never work, never work. What's the problem with the seventeenth, Mr. Donald?
I didn't, I didn't say anything about the seventeenth because what you would do, you would still have the two weeks. So if you did the seventeenth and the thirty-first, then we would have all of that time to prepare, and it would basically be the same schedule.
What's the motion on the floor?
So...
His motion.
The motion on the floor made, amended motion made by Councilmember Reeves and second by Councilmember Rao to have the council meeting on March third and seventeenth.
I moved to withdraw my motion, my amended motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we hold our meetings on March seventeenth and March thirty-first, two thousand, two thousand and twenty.
Second. With the, that's, I accept that amendment, second.
Poppy moved the second, any discussion? Let's vote. That passes. Six.
Next item on the agenda is council comments.
Uh, council, uh?
Yes.
The budget retreat.
Mr. Manager, when is the budget retreat? When is the budget retreat?
We have, we have not set the date yet.
So that's what you're gonna poll us on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What's the next item, clerk?
Chief Financial Man, Chief Financial Officer's monthly report.
We have the December twenty nineteen financial report. So what I was going to do today is to, this is the same that you have every month, and it will be online, but I wanted to concentrate towards the end of it on the revenues, types of revenue that we have. I want to go in details. And I want to start from here. So we opened, as you know, we started our city in twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Tax twenty nineteen, we are in the fiscal year of twenty nineteen, now we'll be getting in twenty twenty. So in twenty seventeen, we billed, you remember, we had only four, five months. We billed fourteen million dollars. And so far, it's not up to the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty seventeen, but up to today, as we are reporting this. Remember, they didn't pay, we didn't correct everything. So this fourteen point one million dollar that we have corrected is from the twenty seventeen up to now. And we have a percentage of ninety-seven percent. And twenty eighteen, we billed twenty-eight million dollars. We corrected twenty-eight million as of December, end of December, at ninety-eight percent. So in twenty seventeen, we still have got a balance of one, three hundred and ten. In twenty eighteen, you have got still three hundred and twenty-four. That's where you have this ninety-eight. We normally had, had to collect a hundred percent. All this ninety percent, ninety-seven, ninety-nine percent we have is because of the Fulton County Tax Commission, which is one of the best in the state to correct taxes. And in twenty nineteen, we billed twenty-six. You see, in twenty eighteen, it was twenty-eight. Twenty nineteen, we were down by two million dollars. And that two million dollars is because of the loss of some parcel that we had from Fulton, Fulton Industrial. But you see also the balance that we have, we still have got one point three balance that we have not yet received. So far, as of end of December, we have corrected ninety-five percent of our tax that we billed at twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars. The next one will come into hotel motel. As you all know, that we have only one hotel in the, in the city, but so far, from October up to now, we have received about twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Then we have two of the AMB. One is two hundred and fifty, the other one we've corrected two eighty-eight, two eighty-three, for a total of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. We have, so this hotel motel tax that we get, we distribute that one into two portions. One goes to general fund. So out of the twenty-nine, eleven thousand goes to general fund. And the eighteen thousand goes to convention visitors bureau, for a total of twenty-nine. Out of that, you have got, I think, Councilman Rao will be talking about, we have not yet received. So that general fund is not that we spent in general fund, it's already earmarked where it's supposed to be spent. So so far, we have eighteen thousand dollars. Then we have got motor vehicle, we have received so far, hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And franchise fees, we have not received in the month of December, but we have already received in January of one million dollars. So when we submit report of January, you see the franchise fees. It starts in January. Then most of them, they will have paid it all by end of April. And we have lost money, that's the sales tax, four point four million dollars. And we have alcohol excise tax, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Then we have insurance premium, that's the one that has really helped us. We budgeted for five million dollars, we received the seven million dollars. So we went above and beyond of what we budgeted by two million dollars that has helped us to make up for some unforeseen expenses. Then we have little estate transfer, that's when people are buying houses, they have to transfer deeds, and they have to pay for that. We have forty-four thousand dollars. And intangible taxes, we have hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Then we have business license, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we have received, and taxes from there is about hundred and eighty-five. Then we have monthly processing for business license, twenty so far in the, from October up to today, the nineteen renewals that we have. But most of the renewals are going to be taking place between now and April. With that, I just wanted to check on the, just a summary of our biggest expenses that we have. Biggest expenditures are on the personnel side, which is fifty-nine percent. Then we have operation, that is thirty-six percent. Expenses are still under because of the high revenue that we have received. Most of our revenues have come from taxes that we received, almost, almost. The majority of that is in December. So we still have got under expenditure because of the revenue that we have more. And this is the summary of the expenditures so far for the month of December, three point nine. And the total expenditure is about fifteen that we have spent so far. With that, I want to get into, if you have any comment, then you may have, or you may have any question.
Your hand. Ms. clerk?
Do we have, do we have anything budgeted for the anniversary? Mr. Donald? Mr., Mr. Donald?
It's not in the budget, unless there's any department, but there's nothing that is allocated to put aside for. I think we talked about it, to say we have city, but none of the, it's not allocated anywhere, that I know.
Well, we are, we are prepared to... We, if you're referring to the City Anniversary Committee, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
So we're prepared to coordinate and activate the City Anniversary Committee through, um, the City Manager's Office and the Communications Office budget.
Okay. And, um, did you have in here, um, anywhere where the census? Do we have a line for the census budget? I know we have 50,000 dollars and we allocated in the budget for, uh, the census. And I know we have used that. Is there anywhere where you are capturing? I didn't see that anywhere on here.
Remember, we didn't do that as a separate line item. You allocated that under Communications Budget.
Okay, that's fine. The only last thing I want to, um, two things I want us to, uh, and I will send you some examples. Uh, I think it's Sandy Springs, I saw M. Roswell. Well, no, Sandy Springs probably would be more in alignment. Uh, they do reports on the confiscated asset forfeitures. And I, I'm, we still need to see that. I understand the restriction, but we still need to see the accounting of it. And then also the Development Authority.
It's actually in the, so the confiscated funds are actually, they've been in the City Manager's Report, with Mr. Malazi, the last three, um...
Yeah, so it's, it's on a monthly basis, but what you saw last in November will be the same of December because nothing has taken place, but it will be doing that on a monthly basis.
And, and we have the reports that you're talking about, the improvements to the report, we'll actually be talking about that in the City Manager's Report following this.
And, okay, thank you. And we should be getting, uh, a budget on the Development Authority relative to what we have allocated to them. So we allocated fiscal year, uh, 19, 100,000 dollars, and we need to see the activity of that 100,000 dollars of how it's being spent. And I can send you an example of the way that Sandy Springs report theirs on a quarterly basis to their city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Malazi, I want to thank you for your work. I want to thank you for sending us all the information that you sent us about the contingency fund. That was a, a little bit touch and go, especially for me. Um, especially since during the budgeting process, I made sure that there were two specific line items in the budget. One was the 150 that was to be used for environmental issues with, um, the, the dump on, um, Bishop Road. And the other was the 1 million dollars that was to be earmarked for litigation. I am not talking about any specific litigation, I'm just using that word, okay? And so, what I want to do, well, you've already shown that the 1, the 150 is protected, but I really think that it should be moved to the fire department in some line in the fire department to make sure that it is protected so that when people are coming up with all these ideas of things that they need to spend money for, that it is not coming out of the contingency fund and reducing what was already approved in the 2020 budget. So that's one thing. The second thing is that the million dollars for litigation, whatever that litigation might be, the way that I've calculated it, out of that, 902, 062 is what's left out of it. Okay? That's excluding everything else that has come through, that has come out of that line, whether it be fire...
Mayor, point of order, please. Mayor, point of order, please.
Can I continue to talk? I'm talking. Two people can't talk at the same time.
Excuse me, excuse me, what's your point of order?
I'm still talking.
Hold on a minute, what's your point of order?
Robert Rule says when you call a point of order, it stops. Uh, we discussed earlier that we were going to discuss litigation in executive session relative to these expenditures. That is what we discussed earlier when this was brought up. Contingency of a million dollars of legal fees, we discussed, we were going to discuss in the litigation. Kalid said, can we talk about it? And some of us had concerns about some of the litigation fees. And we discussed that we were going to discuss this in executive session, under litigation.
I was the one who, I was the one who got the 1 million dollars budgeted in contingency, okay? It was budgeted there. And because when I attempted to move it, I didn't do it in public. So I'm moving it in public now. It doesn't have anything to do with any specific litigation. It's just the budget going from one place to another place. If somebody doesn't want to vote for it, they don't have to. But I don't see, it's not, uh, um, an executive session discussion. It's already in the budget.
Uh, Madam Attorney and Mr., uh, City Manager, we did say we were going to have this in executive session. Was it under litigation? Because there's only several reasons why we could take it like that. If it doesn't fit that, she has the right to say what she's saying.
Well, if, if we're, if we're talking about specifically funding specific litigation, then it would, it would deal with litigation. But if we're talking about in general and we're not talking about any specific case, then we would have to... But here's the thing, i- is it possible to maybe just defer this conversation? Because I did speak with Malazi and I think he could probably clarify some of the concerns that you may have. So maybe after executive session, if you could...
I can't stay that long.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I honestly and truthfully, I'm having a real problem financially dealing with the concept of this. I'm not talking about litigation, any specific litigation. I'm talking about what is already budgeted, what's already approved, but is in... Can I finish? But it's in a certain line, the contingency line. And moving it from there, where it is exposed to, oh, there's some money sitting over there and we need some money for this, so we're going to go take that, something out of that million dollars. It's not protected, that's the point. So I want to move it from there to where it is protected in a line, the 150 in fire, the other in legal. You gotta have a litigation budget. And I can see from the past week how the money is being, is pick that, and pick that, and pick that. So it needs to be moved, it's already budgeted. So maybe I'm crazy.
Well...
It's a budget issue, it is not a legal issue.
Madam Attorney, to get where you want to go in your comments, uh, a motion to lay it on the table would be in order, and then we could come back to it. Because obviously, we're not going to get it resolved here.
So you mean a motion to table until...
Table, yes. I mean, that would, that would be one way to do it. I'm just putting it out there.
Okay, can I...
I think Councilwoman Gumm has a suggestion.
Go ahead, let me get it.
And then I'll be, and then I'll be...
Go ahead, Ms. Gilliard.
If we table it, do I have a promise that nobody is going to touch it until we have time to have a full discussion about it? Whether it's here, there, or anywhere else? And by that, I mean in public, out of public, or wherever.
So moving the money back and forth within the legal line of control would be the financial officer. So if he doesn't make the adjustment, there's no one else who could make that adjustment?
But if he is...
I think she's saying that, that you, does the council promise not to move the money? But I'm saying they, they wouldn't be able to move it anyway unless they met collectively to make that decision.
So, so what, what are you saying?
So I think what she's saying, so, so what, what Mr. Malazi's saying is that he, within his legal line of control, he can move the funds to the places that have been earmarked by the council. But I think what Councilwoman Gilliard's concern is, is that she wants some type confirmation that you won't move any of the money that's been earmarked for the things that she's requested until...
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I just don't want it to be sitting in what is called the contingency fund. And somebody comes up with something they need to spend, let's say 50,000 dollars for, and there's no line item for it. But hey, there's money in the contingency. I'm going over there and it's going to come out of the contingency. Mr. Malazi can protect...
Do you want me to repeat what I said yesterday?
I want you to protect the 150 and whatever is left in the litigation line, because we're going to need it.
It's in the summary I sent yesterday?
I saw all, I saw all of that. It's all, it's all still sitting in contingency, Mr. Malazi.
You, you didn't mention 1, 1 million, you mentioned 900 and something.
Yeah, but I, I deducted from the 1 million.
That means I have started using it. I mean, you already using it.
Yes.
I know that, I know that. My point still is, what is left right now?
It's in, it's in illegal, because we already use it.
You moved it already? You moved it?
Otherwise, how would I have used it? That's the reason why I used part of it.
Couldn't use it unless it was illegal, that's what he's saying.
So you, you, did you move it from contingency to legal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And did you move the 150?
I said it's in the, it's, it's in the line item I said yesterday.
Well, then I have to, I have to admit, I sure enough didn't see. If it's moved, then there's no point.
But it will still come to the board, you, you still have to come to the council.
Mr., Mr. Malazi's in, it's in legal, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kalid, let's move on. Go ahead, you're in the queue.
I'm done, he said it's moved, I'm done.
Um, okay, I mean, I don't, I don't...
It's your comment on the session?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
It's fine. If you're fine, it's, it's fine. I, I do also hear you saying, Councilwoman Gilliard, that you need to go. We haven't had an executive session yet. It's 11:00 PM.
Right.
And so, I am wondering if, if we could move to executive session now?
Okay.
Get answers to like all these questions. I think there are also some other pressing executive session issues. And then maybe we can come back at midnight and resume the rest of this agenda?
Excuse me, Helen, I didn't speak.
I mean, that's, that's just a, I mean, that's just a suggestion. I, I have an item on the agenda that I'm willing to pull off.
Sure.
You know, because I, I see that we're, we're running overtime. I don't know if other people are willing to pull some items off the agenda, but I do know we have some pressing executive session items. So I would move that we go to executive session. For, I'm sorry, I guess I need to say for personnel, litigation and real estate.
The proper move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. That passes. We'll adjourn to executive session. Go, you close the executive session?
I make a motion to close the executive session.
She, she made a motion to reconvene, that's, that's what she need to do.
All right, who's second?
Rau.
All right, poppy move, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, give me a motion to...
I make a motion to...
The next, the next item are consent agendas.
I make a motion to...
Well, we just came, don't let her close the executive session.
You reconvened?
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing?
Well, that's not what we've been doing.
That's what you've been...
Go ahead.
Second.
Proper move, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to table all of the rest of the items except for, uh, whatever Mr. Donald said we have to do tonight.
The, the LOIs for, uh, the Main Street program and the fire apparatus, which I would like to confirm with the clerk, are on the consent agenda.
They are.
It's been approved.
Fire is on the consent, Mr. Donald?
Huh?
Fire was on the consent.
Yes, that's on, fire is on the consent, but the LOIs are not. And I think the, there, the other piece was Merck Miles, um, the, for discussion, the, uh, fee increases.
So it's three things?
One is already, we took care of it, it's a consent agenda. Uh, but there are, yes, Merck Miles, the, uh, LOIs, and there was an item that I believe was from the Development Authority that is...
Mr. Donald, I'm going to ask.
Yes.
Do we need to do Merck Miles tonight? Is it absolutely necessary? Will the sky fall if we, can we just do this LOI and adjourn for the evening?
Table it.
Thank you, that's my motion.
That's your motion. I think it's bigger.
We, we're going to try to get through this, and if you have to leave.
I mean, we're fine with it.
We, we're going to keep running, 15 minutes.
I need a second.
They get a second? There's a motion on the floor, I need a second.
What, what's the motion?
To do the, uh...
My motion was to table everything except for the LOI.
The LOI?
Which was the LOI and the fire station. The fire station is on the consent agenda already, we've approved it. So it's, my, my, my motion is to, um, table everything except for the LOI. Till the next meeting.
A second. Proper move, the second, any further discussion? Go right ahead.
The, the budget amendment for finance, how time sensitive is that? Because that is also on a previous...
The budget amendment.
So the fire equipment is on the budget amendment?
And there, we have the District 5, the budget adjustment is on budget amendment.
So that wasn't on the consent agenda, that was on a previous agenda item?
Can I just call him out and...
Hold on. No, we didn't.
I don't think we did.
I did.
Hold on, give me a second.
Actually, the fire equipment should move from consent to approve it on the budget amendment. That's where it should be approved.
So we need to approve the fire?
Through the budget amendment.
Through the budget amendment.
Not consent.
I don't think we should hold up the fire, I'm sorry.
So that's one item we need to do.
Okay, I, I...
I mean, you want to amend your...
Uh, yes, I would like to amend it to, to do the budget amendment and the LOI.
A second. Proper move, the second, any further discussion? Ms., Ms...
Looking at this agenda, I think we can get through most of this in 15 minutes. We just need to finish this.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, we still in discussion? I just, I don't think we can get through it in 15 minutes. It is midnight, we've already lost one council member. So out of respect, I think we just should do what's absolutely necessary and then let all our staff go home.
Okay, let's vote. The motion was to...
To do these two items and go home.
The motion was to do item number 18, approve 18 and 25, and suspend the rest of the agenda items.
That's all you want to do? Okay, let's go do that. Let's do it.
We're saying go through as much. The vote didn't pass.
Hold on. Mr. Kalid, would you accept, and this is that, would you accept the, uh, the appointments?
That's, that's on the consent.
That was on the consent. That was on the consent.
I'm saying we could have got through the majority of the...
But the one you want was on the consent, right?
No, it's more on...
That, that motion passed. Go ahead.
Hello? Sorry. Council approval and adoption of FY '20 budget amendment.
I move that we accept the budget amendment.
Second.
Proper move, the second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. Go ahead.
Council approval, request approval to proceed with locating Main Street offices within the Red Oak and Oak National Districts. within the Red Oak and Oak National Districts.
I'm gonna turn a motion.
I make a motion to approve those LOIs.
I second it. Probably move the second, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second. Probably move the second, in discussion? Let's vote. That passes.
Do we need to make a motion when you go to item four, or do you just automatically?
Automatically do it.
Good night, everyone.